Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. Couple of housekeeping matters at the top of the meeting. This meeting of the Grafton Planning Board is being conducted with both in-person and remote participation by board members and members of the public. Every vote of the board will be taken by roll call. Remote participation by the public for the public comment, agenda item, public hearings, and any other matter for which the board allows public participation will be via the Zoom raise hand, chat, or Q and A feature. If you raise your hand on Zoom, you will be enabled at an appropriate point to enter the meeting via voice or video to make a comment or ask a question. If you ask a question via chat or Q and A, the question will be right into the record and answered at an appropriate time. In all cases, whether in person here in the room or by any of the mechanisms via Zoom, we ask that you identify yourself by name and address for the record. I'll sort of reiterate this when we start our public hearing process because some people won't be here until 7:30. So first agenda item is public input. If you have anything you wish to raise with the board that is not otherwise on the agenda, now would be the time to ask your question or make your comment. I see a hand raised here. Come up to the either stand or sit, whatever you're more comfortable with, to make your comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Lee Kaufman, 96 Pleasant Street. I'm here before you again. I was here around this time last year in reference to the Grist Mill development in Grafton off Pleasant Street. Have a continuing issue that the developer refuses to maintain the property that he is responsible to maintain until such time that that property is turned over to the town of Grafton. Last time when I was here, the planning board directed me towards Ms. Coughlin and Mr. Bressard. Spent several months dealing with them, really got absolutely nowhere. Once again, this year, the developer, by the way, who's the same developer who's looking to do the Snow Road development, refuses to maintain the property. And myself and the other Butters have been maintaining the property, his broken-down fencing, and really kind of at a don't know what to do at this point because he really isn't doing anything that he's supposed to under the requirements of the special permit. So I'm here to see if we can issue him a cure notice against the retainer or the bond that he has. It's been two and a half years and he has not kept up and maintained his property.
At this point, there's no action the board can take since this is not an agenda item, but I think we'll take note of that and follow up and find out what follow-up actions we can look at.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kaufman and I had met at the site. We have continued to reach out to the developer. They did do some landscaping. They did fix the fence. The issue is kind of the longer-term maintenance. When we get to the determination of completeness process, I advise Mr. Kaufman that that's a public hearing avenue where we can figure out some sort of solution to the fencing and landscaping issue as right now it's a little challenging. And it's also that specific layout was what the board approved during the definitive plan approval process. So we, you know, we are again, you know, encouraging Mr. Kaufman to stay, to continue to reach out to us and work with him. And I will investigate the request for the notice. I'll contact, you know, council and see what we can do.
If I could, at this point, since I understand that town has not taken ownership of the property, we'll deal with that once the town has that. My bigger issue now is for the last two and a half years, he's failed to maintain his property. Again, this year, we're fixing his fence, cutting his lawn, cutting his shrubs, doing all of that work for him. This committee here directed me to Mr. Bressard, who attempted, and Ms. Coughlin, to reach out to the developer, who basically, I can only surmise, said, "I'll do what I want" since he has not done anything. And he's required to maintain that property under the provisions of the special permit that this planning committee gave to him, and he refuses to do so. My request at this time will address the, once the town takes it over, is that a cure notice be issued to him. I, several months ago, sent several emails to both Ms. Coughlin and Mr. Bressard asking that they work with the planning committee, since I'm not sure how that happens with town council or whatever, and I have not received any response, which has been one of my concerns over the last two and a half, three years. The developer is just doing whatever he wants to do. So, well, I'd like to ask, since I know this is a public hearing, as you mentioned, Mr. Robbins, what are the next steps here with timelines?
I would say put it on the next agenda so we can do something. But if we can get some leverage, you know, figure out what...
At least as a discussion, but if there's any action that council suggests we can do, then we can put it as an action item, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah, let's follow up at the next meeting. Meanwhile, yeah, find out, you know. Fiona, you can bring to the board, you know, what actions the board could possibly take. But yeah, I don't, I obviously do not know the answer to that right now. But yeah, your issue has been noted and we'll do the best we can to follow up on it.
Excellent. So plan on attending the next town meeting, is that, if I understood you correctly, the next planning meeting, I'm sorry?
Right, likely to be on the agenda for the next planning board meeting.
Great. Thank you very much.
August 12th.
August 12th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood reminded me that I neglected to do one of the first things, and this has nothing to do with you, Lee, that because one of our board members is attending remotely, I need to call the role of the board.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Hassinger.
I'm here.
Mr. Wood.
Present.
Ms. Brezneren.
Present.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Present.
Mr. Robbins is present. Staff present is, you know, town planner, Ms. Coughlin.
Present.
And associate member, Mr. Dalamoli. Did I get that right?
You did. That's pretty good.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on then, we have a couple of action items to deal with here. The first one is an approval not required plan at 50 Carroll Road and 13 McNell Road. Fiona, could you tee this up for us?
Sure. I can share the plan in a second. Okay, so this is a pretty straightforward approval not required request. The applicant is seeking to modify lot line between properties located at 50 Carroll Road and 13 McNell Road. Yeah, the prior lot line would be abandoned and replaced with a new configuration. The both parcels are owned by the applicant. 13 McNell is currently an undeveloped parcel, just for the board's reference. Both lots will meet minimum zoning requirements, even with the lot line modification. The presumably, the applicant is intending to develop at some point 13 McNell Road. I don't believe anybody is here on behalf of the applicant, but I could be.
My name's Steve Avery, 50 Carroll Road, attending by Zoom.
Thanks, Steve. Did you want to add anything to my short summary of what's being proposed?
Yeah, no, I think you described it correctly. We're just modifying the lot line to just properly account for a setback for the driveway or really parking area in the driveway. So just a slight modification to respect the required setback.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I'll move that the board finds approval is not required and direct staff to do the appropriate documentation.
Second.
Moved in second. Is any discussion of the motion? Your ignore, Ms. Brezneren.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye, declare the motion carried unanimously. Staff will prepare the appropriate paperwork and follow up accordingly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next action item is a bond slash surety approval for Abbey Woods. I understand that that is not yet ready for board action.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Council found some issues with the documentation that was presented by the applicant, so it's currently still under review and we're waiting for those edits, so we can pass over this.
Chances are this will pop up on our next agenda.
Probably.
And perhaps actually ready for board action at that time.
Yes.
Our last action item this evening is regarding the notice of intent to sell Chapter 61 B land at 179 and 183 Upton Street. The usual process requests from this board a recommendation as to whether the town should exercise its right to acquire the land. Should note that the SLUC board last week voted to exercise that right. So regardless of how this board feels on it, the SLUC board appears to be moving ahead with it. But just to close the loop on it, as we are always asked for our recommendation as to whether the town should exercise its right of first refusal.
Do we, you want to take an action?
I think. I'll move that we recommend it.
Second.
Moved in second and any discussion? Your ignore, Ms. Brezneren.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins votes aye, motion carried unanimously. Staff will forward a letter to that effect to the SLUC board.
Yes.
Basically just saying that, yeah, we agree with what you already decided.
Yeah, I mean for...
You have our permission.
[laughing].
All right. We have a discussion item regarding a comprehensive traffic study. Fiona, do you want to...
Yes. Yes, so...
Say a few words about that?
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Barnhart reached out to the planning department office with some concerns that, based on the letter that was submitted, we thought it was most appropriate to discuss in open hearing. A lot of, you know, some of his concerns which were uploaded to the meeting materials, which I'll pull up, predominantly related to traffic. I did want to address some of these, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair. Some of them I can, I can speak to just quickly. So in terms of, you know, a comprehensive, you know, a town-wide traffic study is not very typical. We do have a complete streets plan in place that does analyze how the town can improve the safety, accessibility, walkability, et cetera, of our local roads. The town is, obviously, that's the only jurisdiction that we can really, you know, affect significant change on. We can coordinate with the state on state roads, of course, but I just wanted the, you know, the applicant to be aware that, you know, that plan is in place and we actively are seeking funding for projects listed in that plan. There's, CMRPC does a significant amount of regional planning work in which they analyze, you know, our transportation improvement program. They also do, you know, regional housing studies, you know, master planning efforts. The master plan is currently underway in the town of Grafton where we analyze traffic and traffic impacts for the next 10 to 20 years. There's, you know, a, yeah, their website has a plethora of information and it's more regionally focused, but it is definitely something that I reference myself and recommend, you know, members of the public to do so. Couple of other comments that, you know, are traffic impact assessments that are required as part of filings unless a waiver is requested by the applicant. You know, we have peer review those by professionals who put their stamp and seal on that. And then we, there's a dialogue with the applicant's peer reviewer about impacts of traffic, and we consider projects in the vicinity of that application. So we do try and cover, as you know, cover our bases there. Same thing with stormwater, you know, unless an applicant requests a waiver that was approved by the board, we're making sure that stormwater calc's and a complete stormwater report with engineer stamp and seal is provided. Again, peer review process unfolds from there. There's a dialogue, modifications are made to make sure that the project is in compliance with stormwater by law, wetlands by law, both state and local. You know, we have MS4 stormwater, you know, requirements or NITDs permit. There's a whole heck of a lot of areas that we need to, that the town make sure that they're in compliance with in terms of stormwater and traffic. So I don't want to, you know, I don't want to belabor the point, but there is definitely, there's definitely, you know, plans and processes and studies and research that has been done. I do want, you know, David to have the opportunity to speak to this letter, and I think this letter was very well-written, it's very thoughtful, and something that this board definitely should consider. And whatever we can do to amplify what's being suggested here, I think we can. We do have, you know, traffic studies and for certain areas in town, we can explore other areas. We currently have, you know, a grant, we went after a grant for the common, which we're hoping that we'll find out soon if we got. But yeah, I think I just wanted to give Mr. Barnhart an opportunity to speak to this letter himself, but before doing that, just kind of give him a perspective from my office about how we are actively working to address these concerns and how the board vets these things during our hearings.
Any other discussion, anyone on the board who might have read that and have anything to mention?
It's kind of in the same area that I've been concerned with, with a couple of the matters we've, what we're currently looking at, where no one project justifies the money to fix a problem. But together, they're going to create the problem and trying to have as much handle on that as possible. So, good.
And is this, this board the place to come if you have a concern about traffic at large in town, or is there somebody else that's responsible as well?
We would relay concerns and work with, you know, the DPW and Highway Department as well. I think that this would, if it's related to, you know, a study that the planning department is part of or that we oversee, or this board was involved in creating, or if it's related to a development that is currently under review or was under review at some point by this board, then yes, I would, I would definitely recommend coming before the planning board and, you know, myself as well, so I'd see how we can help.
And there is also a traffic safety committee.
Yes, there is.
Which gets involved, if you have any questions or concerns about potential safety issues of traffic, the traffic safety committee is one stop to make.
Yeah, I'm mostly curious just who's looking at the total picture, because it's a lot of partial pictures that are coming up in the projects, but we don't have the total picture.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So, so if you look at the census data from 2020 and the number of houses that the state has said that we have under our SHI, since we seem to be very concerned about affordable housing, I would just note that since 2020, we have in the pipeline and have built 1,597 apartments coming online. So if we just, if we're going to look at the whole picture, we can, we can look at these individual projects that are coming up, but I don't see where they're really combining all of them. So I know the Millennium Project has discussed other projects around them, but the rest of these projects have not. So that's a significant amount of housing and apartments that we're building. I created a big map at our house, but I saw that you added one, David, which was really great, to see all these apartments coming online at once. I think we do to, was it David? David's point, we do need to start thinking about how this is going to affect the entire town. It's not going to be individual areas. If you look at what might go in at Snow Road, might go on in Worcester Street, might go in an Upton Street, the other place on the other end of Upton that's coming in, all those cars are, you know, funneling down that road. And I, for one, and I'm probably the other folks in this room, drive down those roads a lot, and it's queuing, Greg's point in the other meeting. It's not about the number of cars going through, it's queuing. How long are you sitting in line? And, you know, what risk is that putting others to? And the other night, we had a big concert in the common. We do that once a week out in the common, and I saw kids playing on that sidewalk and cars just coming in and stopping dead, and then people coming across that street. I mean, it's, it's very concerning to have a big project going there. So I think we need a comprehensive traffic study. I really agree with that. Thanks for bringing this forward, David.
Okay, then let us move on. I think it's, it is not yet 7:30, which is the official time for starting the hearings.
Mr. Chair, if I can just follow up quickly, you know, I'm, yeah, I'm more than happy to do, you know, more research, see what we can, we can do and how these, you know, what funding is available and...
Yeah.
What have you?
Let's follow up on that for the best of, the best we can.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Are we going to be able to fit all the people in the room? I'm getting concerned if there's people standing at the door. How many people are, are there people? Okay, okay.
I've seen people leave, though, look in and leave. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's concerning.
Mr. Chair?
May I speak?
Yeah. Just know we have public hearing laws on hold.
Hi, I'm David Barnhart, 68 Weston Street. So you've just addressed my letter, and I think Mr. Hassinger and Ms. Brezneren kind of did catch the meaning. I think all of you kind of caught it, as my concern had been, and I hope that came through in the letter, is that we're seeing a lot of developments, and I know when the developer comes in, they have to do traffic studies in those areas. But they're only going to take that traffic study as far as you force them to, and they're not going to go another road past that. So things like, you know, the intersection of Waterville Street and North Main Street is going to get impacted by Centennial Drive and some of these other things. So there's locations that are going to get impacted that may not be in the immediate, in the immediate vicinity, and that was one of my concerns. One of the things I did want to point, when I wanted to come up here, is, to be honest, I think the hydrological study is probably a bigger issue. The traffic is a nuisance, and, and it's going to be something that I think you can eventually work around. I'm a little bit more concerned when I see the number of developments that are being put into protected areas and into some of these recharge areas for the wells. And when you see that in multiple places, I have a personal bias in that I think water is going to be a scarcity that we're going to see in the future, and it's an area that I've kind of focused in personally. And I think that's one of my bigger concerns. And I don't know if it's a matter of, in some of these places where they have impervious asphalt, whether there's a way of having them use these kind of honeycomb things with crushed rocks so that some of the water does recharge. But as I said, I think briefly, unless I took it out of my letter, you know, we had to go down over 500 feet and, and then hydrofract multiple times to get water. So, you know, I'm looking at the Jesus, I have to go back in and do this again, or if other people have to do these in other places, these, you know, places are coming in, the aquifers aren't recharging, gets to a point where we start having to bring water in from somewhere else. These things can be extremely expensive. So I just wanted to raise that as, and just, I know that a lot of the focus was on the traffic, but the water is probably a longer-term, bigger issue than I think even the traffic is. Traffic is a nuisance, none of us like it. That I think you can work around. The water was something that I, is a little bit more near and dear to me.
Yeah, on that particular topic, many years ago, decades ago, in the late 80s, we undertook to protect our town's public water supply by establishing the Water Supply Protection Overly District. To do that, we looked at the entire town, the geology underlying the town, identified all the areas in town that contribute to the recharge of our public water supply. And this is, this is the current and future public water supply. And we instituted that district for the purpose of preserving the recharge and protecting it for against pollution. So their activities within that area are restricted. And, you know, we did, like I said, we did that on a townwide basis, you know, over 30 years ago. And, you know, put that together with the, with the current stormwater regulations that pretty strictly regulate how the storm, how stormwater is managed and either recharged into the ground or directed appropriately. The existing, I think, I think we have protections in place townwide for our, our water supply. Now, that's, that doesn't address the, the deep wells that homeowners individually have. Those typically get their, get their groundwater from farther away, and that's, that's not as easy, not as easy to manage, to evaluate. But we do, in every development that's subject to the stormwater regulations or the wetlands protection regulations, there's, there's pretty strict standards for management of the runoff and for the purpose of avoiding damage and pollution.
Okay, thank you. And, and really, my point is, it just, like the traffic study, is having a comprehensive look.
Yeah.
It's easy to look at things and be very myopic about each individual development or each individual thing, but sometimes you need to step back. And while you have the developers, not a bad idea to have them pay for it. How, you know, whether you can set off some fees, that's a nice way to not make it a burden on the town. You know, it's just the cost of doing business for developers, so...
Yeah, and what developers are required to do for stormwater management really covers that pretty well, plus the zoning that we have in place to, you know, preserve our aquifers.
Great.
Like I said, that, that's been around for a long time. I helped, I, I was one of the people that worked on putting that in back in around 88, 89, something like that.
Great. Thank you very much.
I think we still have a problem with people not being able to come in. People are open the door, they're looking in, and then they're, they're just standing in the hall at this point, so they can come in. They can come in.
Mr. Chair, maybe we should make a, an announcement that's, maybe the board vocal topics are not going to be until later on in our agenda. So if people, you know, if folks are willing to...
Well, this is an open meeting, they can stay for the meeting.
Oh, yeah, no, definitely, but I'm wondering if maybe to overcome that information. I'll reach out and see what I can, if I can reach out without getting consensus about the room. Did not realize, you know, we just did not realize it would be this many people here this long.
One option we could have if we, if we can't, if the room is not being able to accommodate everybody who wants to be here, we could continue the hearing. And we have on one or two occasions set up in the gym down at the other end of the building here for a hearing where we expected a really large attendance.
Right.
Well, we should check with cable because we've had work going on to connect this room to the upstairs room. If the upstairs room, room F, is not being used, that system will, is intended to allow the two rooms to be connected. What I don't know is whether, I don't know that's ever been done, and the last time I tried to find out, I got an indistinct answer from the people involved. I'm pretty sure that we're not ready now, maybe...
My, my only suggestion that I know of is that we let folks... My only suggestion that I know of is that we let folks know that the order that the hearings are in, if they see the agenda, and just let people know we're taking 18...
I assume it's Bill back there, maybe he knows the status of that. And he, I see an arm waving, and that's all I can tell. I think it's no.
I'm going to reach out as well and see if I can get a confirmation about.
Part of my concern from me and Ms. Two is that it's the...
I think find whichever one is the biggest.
Yeah.
And do it.
The only other solution is yet is to continue to a bigger room.
Part of my concern too is just that, as a public, as a public meeting, public hearing, no matter what the topic is, if you want to be in the room, it's a concern if they can't.
Mm-hmm.
Right now... Right now, it is just about seven thirty. Our hearing schedule for this evening begins with eighteen to twenty-two Donahue Lane, followed by Jumbo's Path, which should be fairly brief, followed by seventeen twenty-seven Upton Street. So if everybody who is interested in eighteen to twenty-two Donahue Lane is in the room, and if anybody is out in the hall who is here for eighteen twenty-two Donahue Lane, I would invite them to come in. And anybody who's not here for that, if you can maybe, maybe.
The, Mr. Chair.
Do you want me to ask if anybody's out there?
Sure, that would be great. But the process would be that you would open the hearing and continue it immediately until we can find a new, a new room. That's the only way.
That would be the procedure.
No, no one's waiting for Donahue.
No one out there is waiting. So everybody who's interested in Donahue is here. So let us proceed with that.
Before we move on, could I ask a question about the water management plan? Thank you.
What?
Not going to litter in front of the board. My name's Eliza Shara. I live at nine Cheryl Drive. I'm wondering how we account for climate change as we think about the water management plan that was set up thirty years ago. I'm sure in incredible detail. But how does it evolve?
That is probably best taken up, we did, we have a hazard mitigation plan. And when we developed that, we, we thought about climate, climate change there. And then at that point, we did not see any near term concerns with respect to climate change regarding our water supply. But that is a topic that the hazard mitigation plan, as we continue to revise it, will be taken into account.
Sounds good. Thank you. My flooded backyard, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, if we, if we may proceed with the eighteen to twenty-two Donahue Lane. This is a continuation from the last time. So can you bring us up to date on where we're at with that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton. On behalf of the applicant, with me is Mr. Michael McHura, the owner and operator at eighteen and twenty-two Donahue Lane. As a brief update, or to take a step back, just as a reminder to the board, we appeared two weeks ago for a special permit amendment. We've been working with Ms. Coughlin as well as the abutters to clean up a prior decision which issued back in 2016, which either lacks some specificity or the bylaws have changed. We did speak with the abutters who were present last hearing outside to open up some additional dialogue and have had additional email communication with them. We provided Ms. Coughlin and the board with some initial proposed conditions as well as some responses to her memo. Some of those conditions revolved around hours of operation and other mitigation matters that we'd be willing and open to include in any future decision. Just to go through those briefly, we were proposing hours of operation from seven to five on Monday through Friday. The original proposed hours of operation were seven to seven Monday through Saturday. So we reduced the hours from seven to five Monday through Friday. And Saturdays, we are proposing hours from eight AM to three PM as opposed to seven to seven. We would also be open to restricting heavy equipment use on Saturdays. We're also proposing to have all stockpiles hydro-seated and ensure all pervious areas are covered with crushed stone or mulch. We would restrict noise nuisance spikes above the ambient level, such as things like tailgate slamming, which was mentioned at the last hearing. We would add signage, which would enumerate some of these provisions at the entrance. We also provided an updated plan, which identified some of these areas of improvements that was submitted through the planning department. We're also open to CCTV cameras to monitor the site for future adherence with any of these conditions. We would limit round trips, or we are estimating round trips to be about twenty to twenty-five a day for company vehicles. And then the employees up to twenty for employees at kind of the max employment level. We're also open to additional improvements on Donahue Lane as well. Point out that Mr. McHura did pave Donahue Lane when he first purchased the property back in 2016. We're open to filling potholes and adding speed bumps if residents like that, and general maintenance at his expense. So those were all proposed in our original update letter to the board. We also provided these to the abutters through email correspondence. They came back with some questions or comments on some of these, as well as some additional feedback. We talked further about potential Saturday limitations on heavy equipment operation. We talked about leaving or modifying some of the addition, existing stockpiles to create more of a buffer. We did talk more about potential fencing, but as the board mentioned and as our abutters mentioned, we feel that would actually do more harm than good by taking down trees to put up a fence. So we would be open if appropriate, and if we thought that trees would grow to some additional planting to firm up that buffer even further. We also agreed to note no further tree removal unless necessary for health and safety or dead trees that have fallen or about to fall. And finally, there were some comments about the roadway, where the current gate is. Even though it's onto the private property, it is used for trash turnaround. So when no one's at the site and the gate's closed, it makes the trash truck back all the way back up Donahue Lane. So we would be open to pushing that down the gate further so they could still use that turnaround. So that's where we stand right now. We did receive the feedback, as I mentioned, from the abutters around Thursday night, I want to say. So we have not had further correspondence since then. But those are some of the conditions we're proposing. And we certainly welcome any feedback from the board on those, as well as continued discussion with the abutters.
Mr. Chair, I may interject.
You may.
We need to make a judgment call here about the number of people in the room, I would say, before we proceed. Because I think it's a fire code issue.
Do you know the number?
It's a fifty?
It's forty-eight according to the upper.
How many are here?
Over sixty.
All right, so ten people leave for this hearing?
No, this is a public hearing.
So we're okay for the moment?
We're over.
We're over?
Not okay.
Yeah, no, you're over by at least a dozen.
All right.
I mean, we, you know, we had to cancel, you know, postpone the meeting because of this.
So I would venture to say, to guess, that most of the audience here is here for seventeen to twenty-seven Upton Street. Raise your hand if that's what you're here for. Okay. And we've, I think, we've, I think we're looking at finding a larger meeting room for this. In which case we would need to open the hearing and then immediately continue it to the next available date. And if that's the case, any of the board disagree with that? I think, I think that's really the way we need to go is just punt it to another date when we can make more space available.
Punt what, sir? Chair, I didn't get, just that one thing or the whole?
Just that one hearing. The one hearing that everybody's here for. And we are overcrowded. And I don't want to deny people the opportunity to be here in person for that.
We have no option. We do need to, we're over right now.
People either need to choose to leave, or we shouldn't expect anyone to leave. Because it's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
Exactly.
I mean, we want them to always want to come and listen to all of the.
So if the only thing you're interested here, I mean, the board is agreeable to postponing seventeen twenty-seven for probably two weeks? Is it two weeks or three weeks?
Couple of procedural things. One is that we're in a hearing, so opening another hearing, we have to work around. And the other is whether we're going to get a request to continue from the applicant because of the toll.
It's not possible to coordinate by topic if people want to step out and then come back?
Well, it is possible.
That would be possible. I suspect that even, even, even if only the people, if everybody who is interested in seventeen twenty-seven Upton Street was here in the room, I suspect we would be over capacity.
Okay.
I don't know. How many are in here?
A bunch of people just left.
No, I saw about two thirds, maybe.
Some people already went home.
They left.
Can't tell what's being said.
If people, this is getting more complicated than I would like it to be.
I have a suggestion.
You got to talk on the microphone.
Yeah, I know, I'm coming over here.
Oh.
Over there.
All right. Cheryl in Reno, eighty-nine Keith Hill Road. I have a suggestion. I don't know if there are enough people in the room who could connect via Zoom. But if we could postpone the Upton Street to the last of the, or to further down the list, if that would give people a chance to go home, get on Zoom, rejoin the meeting from Zoom, that might allow us to continue. Okay, I guess, thank you. So we're, a hearing is open right now for an applicant.
Chair of the select board.
So we, we are in the middle of a hearing. We are taking a detour in order to deal with the fact that the room is overcrowded.
Right, so we need to.
So I want to, I want to deal with the overcrowding and get that out of the way. If, perhaps the best way to do that would be for people to just exit the room, hang around in the hallway, give us a chance to get through the other hearings. We can then get to the seventeen twenty-seven Upton Street, see if the applicant is agreeable to continuing the hearing to the next meeting where we can find more space. And then we can let you folks out in the hall know. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time trying to.
If I might, through the chair.
And just, just to be clear, in all likelihood, we don't have enough space in this room to accommodate everybody who is here for Upton Street.
I don't believe that.
Do you, how do you want to deal with it?
If I might, through the chair, Amory Foley, forty-five South Street. You are over by a fair amount. Some people may have indeed have left. And I think that the precedent has been set that unfortunately, I know it's not what people want to hear, but it should be postponed and then moved to a larger room, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair, can we take it out of order?
All right, we've already started one hearing. Can we suspend this hearing?
I'm so moved.
Suspend it till later this evening, so we can fix. No, wait, hold on. If I can, all we're going to do for Upton Street is postpone the hearing. And if we can get that done right away, then everybody knows what's going to happen. We can get back to this hearing. But we cannot accommodate everybody here for Upton Street.
That is how we should proceed, yes.
I move that we suspend until we resolve the.
Need that to be a vote outside.
Bob, see, it's hard to hear Bob. Bob could just speak, you just repeat yourself for the cable TV.
Didn't pick up your voice.
Yeah.
I said, I move that we suspend the current hearing until we have dealt with the seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street matter, as was just discussed. So we'll be suspending this hearing for a few minutes.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Hopefully enough people will not be interested in the rest of the hearings so that we'll be able to do the rest of the agenda. And we'll see.
I just.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I hope that everyone here is interested in what's going on on Millennial Drive and UPS is coming to town. I hope everyone does want to stay and listen to those as well. Because it's all, it's important to all of us. We don't just care about one section of town. So I will vote that we, I will vote with you guys to move it. But I just want everyone to hear that we do want you to stay and listen to the other projects as well. They're all important to all of us. We're all residents of Grant.
Let's suspend, let's take up seventeen and twenty-seven. And after that, in that discussion, we'll figure out what happens there. Then we'll come back to.
Any other discussion on Bob's motion? Eric Nunn, Ms. Brezner Hand.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkatesh Raman.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. All right, be patient. Seventeen twenty-seven Upton Street is a continuation of a hearing. And as we've just been discussing, this room is not big enough to accommodate everybody who wants to be here for that. So the proposal is, and do I have a representative of the applicant here who can speak to whether they would be willing to continue this hearing to the next meeting?
Natalia's question, I think it was Dave who seconded Bob's motion.
That was me.
It was Justin.
Justin, okay.
Okay, so are we open?
No. It's a continuation. So the proposal is to continue this hearing to the next board meeting, which we will hold in a location that has more seats available than this room.
Mr. Chair, we're agreeable to the continuation. But would it be appropriate to ask if we could have a, maybe a special hearing sometime between now and the next hearing?
The, all right, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is three weeks from tonight. Subject to the availability of a, an appropriate meeting room, would the board be interested in scheduling a hearing, a meeting just for this project?
I'd be open to it.
What?
I would be open to that.
The twenty-ninth would work for me.
Does that work for everybody?
Anybody else? Why twenty-eighth is workable for you?
Yes.
I don't really know. I would hope that we would have, is that enough time to put public notice out? I mean, it's only a week from now.
Formally, we need by pass law forty-eight hours this week, a full seven days.
Right, there is adequate time for giving notice of a meeting on the twenty-ninth. Fortunately for a continuation, we don't have to publish, publish notices two and three weeks ahead of time. Prabhu, are you available on the twenty-ninth?
Yes, I can make myself available.
Twenty-ninth, you want to request the twenty-ninth?
Okay, here's.
I'll move that the board grant the written request to continue the Upton Street hearing until July twenty-ninth at seven thirty PM in a to be determined location that has more seating.
Second. Moved and seconded. The discussion of motions. Hearing Nunn. Ms. Brezner Hand.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Venkatesh Raman.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. Fiona will work on arranging the facilities.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, I can't promise where exactly the meeting will be held.
We'll prepare for everything.
But it, for everybody here, the, the planning board agenda on the town website will include the meeting location as well as the date and time. But the location is yet to be determined.
I have a question. My name is Daniel Gregoire. I'm at one eighty-nine Worcester Street. So I want to be sure that I'm understanding what's happening here. So the entire agenda that was supposed to be discussed tonight is being moved to the twenty-ninth of which month? Or just the Upton Street?
Just the Upton Street project.
Okay, the remainder of the agenda will be discussed tonight.
Right, we have other agenda items.
Okay.
And this is for everybody's benefit, following up on Ms. Brezner Hand's comment. In addition to the Upton Street project, which we've just postponed, we have the Tufts project, the temporary classroom. We have the five Millennium Drive, and we have the UPS project. Those are, we will be holding discussions on those this evening. and we have the UPS project. Those are, we will be holding discussions on those this evening. All who are interested are welcome to stay, except that we need to make sure that our meeting room is not over, not filled beyond capacity, legal capacity.
So, if that, if that is still the case after this clears out for seventeen twenty-seven, we may have to.
Well, let's wait until we. Let's not, let's not look for trouble. There's plenty, plenty without us. If you are here just for Upton Street and you don't want to stay for the others, we'll give a couple of minutes for, for folks who want to get up and leave, to get up and leave. And if you do want to stay, we may have a capacity problem to resolve.
Except that they'll just cancel the whole meeting and move the whole meeting if everybody stays.
Yeah, really. We just need to build a bigger meeting room.
We're somewhere not too far.
Bill, Bill there is our official.
I know that.
How are we doing?
He's a computer guy.
All right.
Cause, cause our, our target number is fifty?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. And you said thirty-five.
Natalia has her hand up on Zoom. Natalia?
Sorry, I had no left with that.
Okey-dokey. All right, I think we are ready to resume the Donahue Lane hearing. Thank you for your patience. We, we do wanna remain legal here, don't we? All right, so you just got done telling us about some of the changes that you've discussed. What do we follow up from that?
So, we, Mr. Eckel spoke to the correspondence that was received by some of the abutters that's uploaded to the record. So, I think it would be wise for the board to consider that information. We should also talk about, and apologies, you did discuss some of the screening and buffering that you are proposing. We could talk about that in a little bit more detail, because that's going to affect, you know, the noise and of the, some of the other issues that this board has been, has been hearing. So, and, and obviously, we, we have folks in the room here that would like to relay some, some public comments. In addition to, to that, and I'll give the applicant a chance to follow up, but I did follow up on an, a request from a member of the public to get a, a council's opinion on the notice to which council confirmed that there, although that the application is modifying a permit associated with number twenty-two, there's no issue with the application as prevented or the public notice, as I confirmed by council. So, I did want to just make it clear, and that email correspondence is uploaded to the record. I did wanna make it clear that I did follow up on that and close the loop on it, and it's no cause for concern based on our town council's feedback. So, with that, I, I would, I would welcome the, you know, the board to continue the conversation with, you know, maybe specifically talking through the abutters' information that they presented as uploaded to the record. It would be exhibit number thirteen. And also a note that there was a couple of requests from the last hearing. We did follow up. Mr. Hassinger requested that we get some feedback, feedback from the building department about prior records that they have, which are also uploaded. So, in terms of the information that was requested, we, we did follow up on what was asked and happy to continue to follow up on what comes out of this hearing as well.
Any questions, comments from the board at this point?
Well, that complaint list disturbs me. We're talking about making this, being able to approve this based on conditions in a, in a new revised special permit. But apparently, a lot of conditions in the permit that they have have been ineffective and not, not effectively enforced, as far as I can tell. So, I don't understand, or I have concern with whether that path to just relying again on conditions and a special permit is going to work. I'm thoroughly unhappy. I, we've known about this before. We've, we've seen complaints and tried to do something about it. I, I went through this and calls and calls and calls and no responses and so on. Anyway, someone's gonna have to tell me how we, how we can move forward and have enforceable rules.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I just, I had two questions. Did the abutters respond to the changes that you were willing to make? Do we know what their response to that is gonna be?
Yes, we did receive an email back. I, I believe it, I don't wanna speak for the abutters if it spoke for all.
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard you say.
Yes. So, we did, we did receive some feedback. Some of the feedback we received, we further have changed our response or slightly altered the conditions that we previously submitted to the board. So, it's an ongoing dialogue. I think what was uploaded was kind of our initial set of conditions, and we've further ratified things like Saturday hours. We're not hours, but activities, how we'd monitor some of the, the activities, some of the buffering in terms of not taking down any trees, not for fencing, and not in general, no, no clearing at all. So, we, we have had some back and forth dialogue. I know there are some abutters here. I don't wanna speak for them. I'm guessing they're not fully, fully on board yet, but we're continuing that conversation and trying to meet in the middle.
Okay. Good for you. Thank you. Thank you.
My only offhand question is, with some of the videos and complaints that were filed in the past from the abutters, when did the rock crushing stop? I know the previous hearing you mentioned that there was no rock crushing on site any, at all right now, but when did that cease?
Ceased before we appeared, before the board last year for the proposed building development.
Thank you.
I have nothing at the moment. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Got a couple of hands up. Obviously, one at a time.
Good afternoon, good evening. I was a group, I'll tell you. My name is Bill Fairbanks for Donahue Lane. I know this is redundant, but Donahue Lane is one of the main factors, I think, because Donahue Lane is the one that's being used by Mr. McCures and his equipment. But we never get notified. The only way I get notified is luckily, a couple of people up in the Hollywood area that actually do abut his yard, they let me know. And that's the only way I get to know. And I don't think that's right, because we are probably the main focus for their entry in and entry out. So, I had some comments that maybe you didn't get, if you don't mind. One of the things that the, Mr. McCure is comparing eighteen Donahue Lane, that's the first building, which was owned by Earl Fleming and his business. Fleming in nineteen seventy, he put down. It was not zoned as a contractor yard at that time, or for storage or stocking. I believe it was zoned for business, and the top half where I live was residential. Now, I know this board does not have anything to do with zoning, but I will tell you this much, that when I talked to the zoning chair back, I think it was in eighty, or early nineties, which was the first time we were notified that our zoning was changed. And that was because somebody in our street decided that they were gonna sell their property, but couldn't change what they had. Zoning said, at that time, they didn't have to notify anybody, which is a bunch of, I think, you know what. Now supposedly, they have to. Now I'm stuck with it. And I moved in nineteen seventy-one, so I have an idea where most of these people don't realize, that when the Flemings had it, they parked their trucks there in the equipment, probably about ninety-eight percent of the time, and used the present business, business, uh, building for work on their equipment. Two percent of the time, he might have some dirt and piles next to the left-hand side of the shop. He had only three trucks. They would go out at seven AM in between four and five, Monday through Friday, only once a day. They didn't come in and out, in and out, in and out. When Fleming sees business, he leased the property to the Golden Truck Company, which pretty much used it the same way. As far as the Mantilli brothers, Al and Bob, they had only two dump trucks. And they parked their trucks there at twenty-two Donahue Lane and any equipment they own, and used the building for their own use. Mr. McCure is proposing a twenty to twenty-five trips a day. That's fifty trips roughly, twenty-five down, twenty-five back. Donahue Lane is only an easement. It's not a public road. It's just an easement, which is, an easement is giving the right of passage to the people below us. This was not built for any type of traffic. Mr. McCure wants to, as I said, the twenty to twenty-five trips a day, mostly with ten-yard dumps, which most ten-yard dumps hold between ten and fifteen cubic yards of dirt. That's a lot of weight going up and down the street. If you were to weigh one, I hate to say this, but I think it was over two thousand pounds. I'd like to know is, who would be liable to fix the water pipes that are underneath? And why you have to repeat, repair my section that I didn't create? And if the ground was to collapse because of all the weight, who's gonna fix that? The people on the street? Not right. I know Mr. McCure said that he would fix the road. The last time he fixed potholes caused by his trucks on Donahue Lane was June twenty-ninth, nineteen twenty-two. I have that on record. March twenty-fourth, twenty-three, I told him there were several potholes near the Worcester Street, and asked if he would take care of them. He said he saw them, and, and the plants would open four-ten, and he would beget some milling from that area to fill the holes temporarily. This never happened. The holes after several months were filled by friends of Noel's Auto. They asked if he would like that done, and he said, great. As far as using this yard for snow removal, that would be against the hours of operation that he's proposing. And the days of the week, that's also against the, the days that he's proposing. Also subject to the property to be under his, if he was to sublet it, the people that he sublets to, unless he maintains a presence on site, he has no control on what they do. And at twenty-four, seven, if we have a bad storm, you try to sleep in that storm, with trucks going up and down, plows going up and down. Then, this has happened, I guess, several times. We never knew it. I happened to be outside with one of the Harvey trash trucks, came backing up the street after picking up our trash, which is legally bound by the town to have our trash picked up. We pay for it, they pick it up, same thing with recycle. The driver stopped and asked me, he says, why are there gates down there? And I says, because Mr. McCure doesn't want anybody on his property. But we have no place to turn around. The only time we can turn around down there, if he has workers there, the gates are open. Now, the gates are always closed, or I shouldn't say always closed, but for the most part, they are closed. And unless he knows a better way of keeping that, that gate open on the day that the truck's gonna be there, more power to him, I guess. But if they have a holiday, he has to change his stay off too. So, I know, like you said, the, the planning board has nothing to do with zoning, but a lot of this has to do with zoning. And I'll tell you, my wife and I are fit to be tired, because it was never used the way he's using it now. And that's only in the past eight years. The other almost fifty years, it was not used that way.
I'm interested in that, you mentioned the easement. Who? Tell me about the easement. Who is granting the easement?
Donahue. Donahue, it's on my deed. Made the easement right at the bottom of my deed, and several other deeds.
So, it's an easement over your land?
Mm-hmm. And it has to go over my land to get to the next one, because I'm at number four, which is only the second house on Donahue Lane.
And who put in the water?
The town. It's the town water.
The water district.
There is another water pipe, but that's a private one.
Where does it go?
Where'd it go? As far as I know, it's still there.
No, where does it go to?
Well, it comes from, I think the water department let him tap into up on Worcester Street, and it goes down to number fourteen. Previous owner had it put in and paid for it.
Who did?
The previous owner.
Of the?
Number fourteen.
But there'd already been water to?
It was water on, on Donahue Lane when I moved in in nineteen seventy-one, granted by the town through the town of, I think back then it was called, um, Whittsville Water or something like that. And finally, the town bought it. And now it's the, mainly the water company that we use, because South Grafton has a different water company.
No, the, the water district, the, the Grafton Water District took over, what was the name of it?
Mass American.
Was it Mass American?
Okay, I couldn't remember the name.
But, oh, okay. So, the water company that was providing water to the most of Grafton, north and central Grafton, put in a pipe to, how far down?
That pipe was there.
No, how far? Twelve?
From Worcester Street, connected to the main at Worcester Street. And with, number fourteen was not there, was not built. So, then that means it went down to number twelve or number ten. Somewhere in that area.
And, and so then, there's been an extension put in from there to fourteen?
No. Number fourteen hooked in at Worcester Street into the water company.
With a separate pipe?
With a separate pipe.
All the way?
All the way down to fourteen.
Okay.
I watched him do it. That's why I know it.
But it gets more and more.
How, how? I don't know. But.
Yeah.
But the, the pipe is pretty old now. And that road's not a thick highway or public. And that road's not a thick highway or public road. And again, if that road were to collapse because of the weight that's going up and down, up and down, up and down, twenty, twenty-five trucks going each way, that, like you said, fifty trips. Also, you know, you can't even open up your windows in the summertime.
So, yeah, what, what you mentioned brings a thought to my head that maybe.
I'm old, so you have to speak up.
Oh, sorry. What you mentioned brings a thought to my head that maybe Town Council can help answer for me is if the road is, which it is, is private, if it's.
There is, there is, it is.
It is private. If it's under easement by each of the individual owners, do we have the right ability to actually grant any modification to a permit that involves more usage of that road with additional weight and additional trucks? Because the ownership of the road is not the town's.
I'm sorry?
I'm saying the ownership of the road is not the town, it's.
It's not the town.
So the, my question, which is more fair to our Town Council, our lawyers to tell me, is, do we have the right authority to say, yes, you can do X number of trips with, you know, heavy equipment that, you know, is on the, is part of this modification without having the ownership over that land, over the road? I'm not sure. And that's a curiosity question I'm hoping our council can answer for me with clarity.
I, I don't know. Um, all I know is that I own up to the middle of the road.
Is there sewer and?
No. They, when the sewer went across Worcester Street, we checked on it. And the town says, you will not get sewer ever because it has to be pumped up.
Hmm.
Okay? So, the town wasn't up by a pump.
Sewer department does not like to put in pumps.
Because it goes uphill at that point.
Yeah, I guess.
Now, I know number two does pump it up. They paid for it themselves.
Yeah.
Just maybe five years ago. They paid for a company to come in and they did all the work and tapped it into the sewer up on Worcester Street. And I don't know how much that cost, but I would say anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. That's them. And each one of us is good, which would, would cost more. And at my age, I don't think so. I'm so little than you.
Okay.
Okay? Anybody else have any other questions?
Out of this time, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's next? Sir?
Shall I move to call me on the clock? No.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Steve Arie from thirteen Hollywood Drive. Um, I just want to say to Mr. McCure, I appreciate your willingness, uh, willingness to compromise and collaborate with us. I was a little bit frustrated that we only had forty-eight hours to collaborate via email when he did email us at the end of last week. With that willingness, it was a step in the right direction, but I think there still have been many violations. And going back to last year where it has not been followed, um, from what he said he would be doing. That includes hours of operation. I have a log of when the company started early and ended late. And just approved equipment on site, um, flammable tanks that have been stored on site, just things that really stick in my mind. In terms of hours of operation, it's really a sticking point for me. I don't know, understand why they need a full eight-hour day on Saturday. When a lot of construction companies have very, very, very short hours on Saturdays. Um, once again, another sticking point for me is approved equipment on site. Um, I worry about flammable tanks and things being close to our families. And then, just like Mr. Fairbanks just said, um, the trips to and from on a private way. Um, last year when I was handing out flyers to notify neighbors about the meetings, I saw an eighteen-wheeler truck going backwards down to Onihue Lane on to one-twenty-two. Uh, last year, when this was happening. Um, and I have a video of that. I posted that to the evidence board. Another thing in the proposals is the huge piles that are on the site. The fact that they're being proposed to be hydro-seated is concerning to me. That just means that huge mounds are going to be there forever, whether it's just my thought that might be happening. I still worry. I appreciate that we're willing to compromise on the berm. Um, but I, I, I'm not going to be able to take your word until I see it in writing or until I see it actually voted on, um, because I still worry about berm and trees being cut down. Um, six months of the year, I can just see these big piles from my back window. Um, and the noise is just terrible. Like Mr. Fairbanks said, it's hard to even open a window sometimes with how, with the tailgate slamming and how loud it gets. Um, and then my last point, I would love to hear back from Town Council about the use of Dunhill Lane. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? John?
Good evening, Mr. Robbins. John Renzoni, seven Jordan Terrace. Hope your evening's going a little better. Uh, just, it's gonna be quick. Again, Mr. McCure did approach all of us and, you know, we did have some productive conversation. Still, as Steve and Mr. Fairbanks mentioned, I still have a little concern with the hours of operation. I mean, it does back up to our neighborhood. The weekday hours of operation, I'm, I'm very comfortable with. Still the weekends, I mean, even if they work a half-day on the weekends, they're cutting into the time that families are using their properties up in that neighborhood. So I do have a little concern with that. I know he had also mentioned that, you know, the possibility of using the property for snow operations. Now that's gonna, I would assume negate any restrictions on our use, hours of operation, if they were allowed to do that, you know? So they could be there at three in the morning to fire up trucks and head out. And, you know, that's going to be a little disruptive, especially at that point where there's be no leaves on the trees or anything. And again, we did discuss any more possible fencing, which we, Mr. McCure, you know, mentioned that we are in agreement that to try to do any fencing or berming is probably going to be more disruptive to the trees that are doing a pretty good job now. And, you know, we're, I think, in agreement that that would not be worthwhile moving forward with trying to do any fencing. It's not going to stop the visual, the visual of seeing the site, and it's definitely not going to stop the noise. And I know he did mention, you know, that they were going to try to do something with, with noise, but going to Mr. Hassinger's concerns, you know, the enforcement. You know, with the hours, the equipment, the noise, you know, the operations that are going down there, the enforcement is going to be my, my biggest concern. I think Mr. McCure has presented some very good options, but it's all going to roll back to the enforcement, which has been almost non-existent down there. You know, until complaints were made and made and made, and then even when enforcement officers went down there, nothing was really done. Because I know specifically in that twenty-fifteen special permit that there was to be no heavy equipment. And to this day, there's still heavy equipment down there. You know, so I would like to also see some type of restrictions on what type of heavy equipment can be down there in operation. You know, as for storage, it's one thing, but this equipment that he was using, you know, the stacked material, which again is getting the height up on the, the piles. And it'd also be nice to, if the board could set some parameters as to either the heights or the, the square footage area that material, dirt material could be stored in. You know, just so it doesn't end up being too high or encroaching too close to the properties, you know, on Hollywood Drive. But I mean, other than that, I think we got a good dialogue going. It's just, even if we get all of these concessions and we both come to an agreement or the board comes to an agreement with Mr. McCure, you know, what's going to guarantee enforcement? You know, and to roll that in, I, I didn't mention, you know, this talk about leasing and renting. You know, that could become a big problem. Now, I understand he needs to be able to support that property. But if we have renters or leasers down there and they violate the conditions of the special permit, who is going to be held responsible? And who is going to enforce getting that to stop? Again, we roll back to the enforcement again. So that's about all I have. You know, I think we got a good dialogue going. It's just getting everything nailed down and making sure that whatever the board decides on is going to be enforceable at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm not sure whether I actually said it when I mentioned the enforcement issue, but I'm more concerned if you can't control the perma-te, how do you control someone that he leases to? That's going to be harder. I, 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 I think that dialogue maybe can continue and get to a place where everybody is on the same page. I'm hoping that that's where we get to.
It, it sounds like that's the direction in which things are moving.
They're not there yet, but it sounds like it's moving in that direction of, you know, coming to some more, coming as close as possible to an agreement. Any, any other comments out there from the public out there? Any comments from any of the public on Zoom?
John Renzoni, seven Jordan Terrace, just wanted to add, Dave, I agree with that statement that we're, we're coming together, but I want the board obviously to be involved with what's going on too, you know, to make sure that, you know, even if we're in agreement, it may not be something the board's comfortable with, so I just wanted to.
But, but when there's a proposal that has a chance, we'll see it.
Right, okay. That's, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I think that's what, at this point, it sounds like that's what the board would be looking for is to sort of finalize any negotiations between the applicant and the abutters. You know, and at which point, a, I mean, we, we've kind of seen some of the ongoing discussions, so we're, you know, the, with the board, you know, the materials submitted with this, you know, give us a sense of where the discussion is going. And if, I think if, if, if that were to be, at least from your perspective, if you think you have it kind of nailed down, then the, the board would obviously look at that and have an opinion on it. Mr. Fairbanks?
Sorry to interrupt again, Bill Fairbanks again. You keep on talking about the abutters, and as I stated earlier, the people on Dunhill Lane have no idea what's going on unless we're notified by somebody up in Hollywood. We are not considered in a butter. The butter has to be three hundred feet. Well, most of us don't live within three hundred feet, but most of us get the impact of all the trucks going up and down. There was one time, and I have video on it, that seventy trucks up and down, thirty-five up, thirty-five down. Another time it was thirty-five. And I have video on that. So, can we somehow notify the residents on Dunhill Lane?
Do what? Oh.
Yes, how, how best can the, the residents on Dunhill Lane who are not within three hundred feet of the property per se, how, how best can they be kept informed and, and be made a part of this?
A copy of whatever you send up to Hollywood, I guess.
Well, uh, there, there's a paying for and all of that that goes on with those notices.
If it has to be paid for, I'll pay for it out of my pocket. All right? If it has to be paid for, I'll pay for it out of my pocket.
But. It's important to rea, to, to keep in mind that the, the paper notices to abutters go out at the beginning of the hearing process. Uh, there, there is no ongoing paperwork that's mailed to the abutters. So the, 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 that, keep it, keeping everybody in the loop once the hearing process starts is really all about being, participating in the hearings about, you know, if the applicant, for example, is reaching out to the abutters, the applicant might want to re, reach out to the, you know, you and anybody else who lives in Dunhill Lane, if you're, if you're interested in, in continued participation, maybe you want to touch base, you know, through the office here or with the abutters, the, the applicant directly to make sure.
I thought the office was going to notify us once things went on, but nothing happened.
I don't, I don't.
I underst.
I don't know about that. But the way, the way the system's supposed to work, tonight we'll probably continue this to a date. So you'll know what the date of the next hearing is. And there's a page on the town website where you can see all of the documents and when new things come in, you can see them. And that's the way, um, that's the way the law sort of anticipates that this process works.
Well, not many are up against the same situation that I am, or my neighbors are. You people wouldn't like it if it happened to you.
No, but, um, we, we have laws we have to deal with.
You know, I understand that.
And, uh.
It goes back to another thing. I have been to these meetings before on this same road.
Yeah.
About the same thing.
And I was here.
Okay? And it was because my good neighbors up in Hollywood notified me.
Yeah.
It's not up to us to notify each other, I wouldn't think.
That's.
And we are the main code.
Chapter forty-eight. Math general law.
Again, as, as a reminder, it's, you know, the, the legal requirements are to send out, to mail a notice to the abutters at the beginning of the process, but thereafter, it's basically up to you to participate and, and engage. But it, the, the trick is you knowing about it in the first place, which is.
Which I never was.
Well, but, but now you do. And, and that's the same, no matter whether it's the Hollywood Drive or Dunhill Lane. Now we have everybody who's interested. They need to keep track of when the next, the next thing is. And if you saw that previous hearing, someone put something up on social media yesterday and all of a sudden we have a overflow crowd. So, um, there is more than one way of sharing.
All right, I hope everybody understands where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I think so.
Fortunately, you are now involved and you know, you know, and, you know, despite the fact that you weren't initially notified, you know, you've become a participant in the process and I hope you continue to engage.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Merrill. I'm at fifteen Hollywood Drive. Um, and I want to reiterate what my neighbors have said about the positive nature of speaking with Mr. McCure and his counsel to come to some kind of acceptable, you know, compromise. But Mr. Woods earlier brought up a, a point, and I just want to know, shouldn't that point about the easement and whether you're even allowed to give a special permit on a property where there's easement, an easement and everybody on that road owns that property, be addressed before we get into any further discussion with them? And if so, how long will that take for your counsel to maybe get that?
So, I'll, I'll answer what I understand. I think the, we should move forward as if this is a completely viable thing for the board to approve. We will need that answer from counsel in my mind before we would finalize a decision, one way or the other. That could, we can still close the, we can't close hearing to wait the deci, the answer, but we would want the, that answer as part of our record and we'll be able to go from there. It, there's many ways that the council could answer it. It could be nuanced, as all lawyers tend to do in my experience, is it could be nuanced answers, but the, we'll take whatever they tell us and we'll go from there.
And how will we be notified what the?
It will be added to the record on, on the town's website. You could also contact staff to see if it's been in place by, be by email or something, or when you come to us, I'm sure we'll, once we have that in, in hand, I'm sure at least myself will be talking about what they say.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, um, I, I guess the principle is that there's no harm done talking while we're waiting for input. One input can have other input. Is anybody else?
Any other comments from the public? Anybody on Zoom? I don't see any hands raised on Zoom.
Anything else from the board at this point? I think we pretty well covered what, yeah, we, I think we need to see happen. In terms of getting together.
If I can just confirm, so it's very clear, so we'll, we'll potentially, you know, continue, you know, continue and then analyze a final kind of proposal that incorporates the commentary that we heard this evening and what's been uploaded and that also, you know, I'll get consensus. you know, I'll get consensus from counsel as well for the public's request. That would be what we would be discussing and.
I don't think we're discussing what, what we have now. I think the discussion is that there should be further.
Right, that's.
Further discussion, and that is what would feed.
Yes, right. The revised proposal based on the feedback that we've heard next time, so we can, we can have something more concrete to go off of. And then, you know, I, I personally would, the, the screening and the buffering on the plans, the plans need to be revised, you know, because the board is going to structure the decision based on the plan set that we received. So I just want to, you know, put that out there that, you know, that we can come to some sort of consensus on what that screening and buffering will be and how we handle that.
And when you're getting input from counsel, you're going to ask about enforcement. What, what can we do to mitigate or resolve or help that concern? Because it's, some of us think it's a problem.
Have anything to add?
I don't want to take up too much more of the board's time. I know you still have a lot in front of you. I, I think we're all in agreement. We're taking steps in the right direction. I think some of the things that were mentioned tonight, like the trash truck, we've already got some mitigation in place to, to allow that to occur. Certainly, storage of materials that shouldn't be there can, will not happen and will be conditioned. I think in terms of enforcement, I think the biggest takeaway and, and why we're really here is obviously to address the butters' concern, but also the prior decision, I don't think gave enough teeth to enforcement with lacking specificity when it came to things like hours of operation. So certainly, once we come to our final hours of operation that hopefully make everyone at least halfway happy, there'll be some enforcement measures there in terms of, you know, a subsequent tenant or whoever it might be. Any lease would certainly come with a copy of the board's decision and clearly lay out, you know, the parameters set by the town and this board, but also, you know, the, the owner of the property. So I, I do think by getting to a resolution here, you know, I can't speak for exactly what would happen and who would come down to the site at what time, but certainly this process is going to allow, I think, for more enforcement and for, you know, clearer parameters for everyone. So I think we heard some additional feedback that, that mimics some of what we heard in our email correspondence. I think we can certainly take a look at, at a few of these things further. And I guess provide an updated list of our proposed conditions that, like I said, hopefully make people somewhat happy, if not all thrilled with the outcome. But we'll, we'll continue to work with the butters. Uh, Sofflin will, will be in touch with you with, I guess, a firmer, revised set of conditions. And then I would hope maybe the board could talk specifically about those conditions at the next hearing, so we get a little bit of an idea of where the, where the board stands with things.
And I, I think the board probably will expect to see a, a plan reflecting, you know, any condition, reflecting any screening, buffering, or landscaping that might be done, reflecting, you know, limits of work, you know, to sort of, to help set, you know, helps, you know, make, make sure we're clear on the parameters of exactly where the various activities are taking place, what is going to be touched, what's not going to be touched. It may not be that, I mean, yeah, I kind of think I kind of heard you say that there's, for example, I think you've ruled out the idea of a fence. You're referring to, you know, to preserve all the trees that are there, you know, a, a, a plan sort of clearly reflecting what's being agreed to. Again, limit, limits of work, you know, where, you know, where the, you know, where, what areas outside the building are going to be used, what, what's going to be left alone, that type of thing.
Sure. Absolutely, Mr. Chair. And we did provide through Ms. Sofflin, it's still a little elementary, I know, but it, it is a plan that really denotes the storage area as well as, you know, the green space that won't be touched or will be ceded. Obviously, if there's more discussions about trees, we can start to identify that, but we want to make sure that's what everyone wants to see as well.
I was unclear in what the colors on that plan represented.
Yeah, but what we end up with has got to be usable in the enforcement process. So whether it's a sketch or whether it's a stamped drawing, I will have somebody figure that out.
Sure. And, and we will continue to refine it again. We're still fact finding, but hopefully at, at the next hearing, which obviously we will be continuing. You know, we'll be closer to a resolution and have some final, final feedback from the board. So we appreciate the feedback we've received.
I think I didn't see that version of the plan that's on the screen.
It's in the record.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, would, would it be possible that they could come up with some, if, if, if there's some penalties that they could come up with on their own?
He's already suggested.
Oh, so he would tell us what the fine might be.
He's going to help us with that.
Numbers. Okay.
Sure.
Wonderful. We'd love to hear that. Save us some trouble.
Okay, well, you want to?
I guess at this point, we respectfully request the continuance.
What, three weeks? Our next meeting is three weeks.
Yes.
August.
August twelfth would be the next meeting.
I move that we prove the applicants were in request to continue this hearing until August twelfth, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty P M.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion of the motion?
If I may, I'm not sure if you, we're discussing schedules. Not sure if you identified a date. I'm actually at our town on the twelfth.
Okay.
So we just want to make sure our schedules align.
Next one we have.
A, a date that works for you.
Is there a, a scheduled date following that, or is that still subject?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth.
Yes, that works. Thank you.
Okay. Modify that motion to be August twenty-sixth at seven thirty P M.
Modify the second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Ms. Brezneran.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Assinger.
Aye.
Mr. Ben Katraman.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. We'll see you in a month or so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
And thank, thank you. Thank everybody for your participation.
At least the ticket prices are okay for these.
Ah, okay.
I can fill Montauk's.
Give a moment to.
Just going to get some water.
Here.
Here's the next one. Oh, he's got a bottle. Thanks.
Alrighty, where are we at? All right, our next item on the agenda is the continuation of the request for project plan review from Tufts for the temporary classroom on Jumbo's Path. For that, we have our folks from Tufts here. We have some updates. We, we also have a draft decision prepared for the board to contemplate once we've closed the hearing.
Thank you. So Alistair Cribb, Dina Coming School.
Michael Grossworth with WDA Design Group.
Greg O'Connor, GJO Associates Architects.
So last night, we've discussed the classroom itself. We were looking for additional information on the design of the parking, which had been submitted, and the gentleman here will answer the specific questions.
So I'm not sure you've all seen the package that was submitted with the additional drainage information that was missing. And I know that it went to Graves Engineering for the review, and the responses come in, and I believe we've answered all the questions.
Yes, so just, yeah, just to reiterate, it was really, the, the board will recall, we requested the additional information for the parking lot. That information was provided and uploaded to the record. Graves checked it out, and Graves had no issues. Planning staff reviewed, didn't have any issues. The one straightforward thing this evening, I think.
I looked, I looked it over. I didn't have any issues. Nothing, nothing that I'm aware of that remains to be resolved. Anybody else on the board?
Anybody else?
Any public comment? I don't see any hands on Zoom.
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Moved in second that the, the board, this public hearing be closed. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing done. Ms. Brezneran.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Assinger.
Aye.
Mr. Ben Katraman.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. The hearing is closed.
Thank you.
All right. We have before us a draft decision. I looked through the draft decision and nothing caught my eye that needed to be changed.
There was, I believe, I added one, a comment.
There's C, there's C four highlighted.
Yes.
C eleven. Has a comment.
Yes. Sorry. I'm seeing it's C, C four. Yes, I highlighted this, um, just to close the, the, close the loop on, um, just comply, you know, memorializing the requirements that are already in the bylaw for the parking, because there's a lot of changes that are occurring and we just boiler, kind of boilerplate zoning bylaw language that I included here for consideration. If the board doesn't think, isn't agreeable, I can happily take it out.
I'm okay with this condition.
What sort of emotion would you like?
And then I had, um, two, if there's no other discussion on that, I did have, um, one, a comment about, um, condition eleven. Obviously, the, the construction, the parking lot will, the auxiliary parking lot will need to be, um, started in, in earnest to overcome, um, the lapses in spaces. And I believe the applicant mentioned this during the hearing process, that they would, would want to move faster on the, the parking lot, uh, building permit process. So I just memorialize that to make sure that we're, we're, um, keeping to that schedule.
I'd just add that we also have identified another area already constructed. We can shift some roads around and ha-, add some additional, um, road parking with no construction required as well. So we have that in addition to the new parking lot.
So. Do we need C eleven with the addition of C four if they're doing the restriping of new spots?
You get, C four was more of an inclusion of the bylaw language. So we have, so they, you know, the applicant will have it going forward to know, you know, it's, it's focused more so on the annual parking update. But if you, if, if it's not, if it's, you know, e- extra, then I.
My only, my only reason for not C eleven is where the applicant just mentioned that they are looking, they identified some areas where they can do some striping to add more spots, even before this is constructed. That's my.
Of course, that's, the hearing is closed, so that's part of the record.
True.
So with the board would like me to proceed, how?
Do what?
How would you like me to, to proceed?
I'm waiting for someone to suggest a proper motion. I think we could approve this.
Well, there's, um, I just want to talk through one more comment for the board and for the, the public's own.
Yes.
Public book as well. So, uh, C twelve, I added this condition. It's, it's really more, it's, it's, I'm sorry, what this looks like, it's. Yeah, so it's just additional language about modification from the bylaw as well. I'm fine, with all of the, you know, anticipated changes that we heard during the hearing. I think it's best to memorialize, you know, some of the requirements of the bylaw, but.
Yeah, this is basically just saying that, you know, this is what happens if what we approved by this permit, if they want to modify it.
Correct.
Which is pretty standard for us.
Yes.
If you want to, if you want to change what we've authorized you to do, then come back to us.
Yes. And that's, those are the only other com-, that's, that's all my comments, so.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments about, Fiona's comments?
I think.
Comments about, comments about.
The only thing I think I would change in this decision is probably in, leave C eleven roughly as is, but maybe add a, or provide additional parking spaces to account for the loss of, with this. Something along those lines. You can wordsmith it, but I think that would allow us to keep the intent of C eleven, but without necessarily requiring the start of construction, as long as we, they identify a way to provide the spots otherwise.
Okay, understood.
Thank you. I'll move that we grant the decision as drafted with the additions that were just mentioned.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing done. Ms. Brezneran.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Assinger.
Aye.
Mr. Ben Katraman.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. Fiona will get the paperwork done.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience through the other stuff for this evening.
Glad they weren't all here for us.
That would have been a surprise. Alrighty, we've already dealt with item C, the Upton Street Project. And item D, next on the list, the request for plan approval at Five Millennium Drive. Your turn.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mark Poprowski, representing Claremont Company. My office is in Concord, Massachusetts. As you know, Bill Lovett is their Director of Development. So we're, I think we have a one-issue agenda here for our meeting, don't we?
Yes, so the, um, we have Bowman on as well to discuss the, uh, last outstanding item of the, the traffic peer review, which would be the fair share contribution for the Pine Street Route thirty intersection. Um, so we had some, you know, I'll let the applicant speak to this, but we had some dialogue with the DPW Director, the applicant, um, our peer review team and theirs, came up with a range that, uh, there were some adjustments that were made from the previous, um, proposal from the applicant, and we ended up with a range of about between thirty-three thousand and thirty-six. But considering the feedback that we received from our peer, uh, peer reviewer and the data that was provided, um, the planning, you know, staff did not see, you know, didn't see any issues with that. That range that's proposed, I mean, thirty-three, based on the data and what we've heard, doesn't seem like a problem. I will have Maureen speak to that in, in more detail, because she's smarter and an actual traffic engineer. But that was really the, the final, uh, loop that needed to be closed. There, at all of the other commentary, the peer review from Graves Engineering, there was no outstanding concerns. Um, Allen and Major met, provided revised plans to add the sidewalk, the internal sidewalk to the dog park that I requested. Fire department signed off their, um, email correspondence is uploaded into the record. So they're, they're comfortable with the turning analysis. That was revised. So, yeah, this is really the only, um, the outstanding, um, issue to address.
If you'd like to hear from your peer reviewer, then we'll, I'll take a seat while Maureen enlightens you on the last issue, and then I'll come back up.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Very good.
Maureen? Hi, good evening, board. Um, so as Fiona mentioned, there was a fair share contribution memo that was submitted by the applicant, um, that we had reviewed last week. We had no issues with the methodology that was used. It essentially uses the, um, the estimated project trips and looks at the future traffic volumes and comes up with a percentage of, uh, traffic impact to the intersection, and then applies that percent impact to an estimated cost, uh, for the signal improvements. When we had looked over the proposed cost, we had a couple of comments relative to some unit cost and some other, what we would call kind of like soft costs that have a range associated with them, things like police details, mobilization, construction contingency that would be, um, expected at this high level of an estimate, um, for a signal plan. So we provided those comments in a letter back to the applicant at the end of last week. Um, and based on those adjustments with some ranges for mobilization costs, um, police detail costs and construction contingency. Um, police detail costs and construction contingency, we came up with an estimated uh contribution fair share of around. Thirty-three thousand on the lower end to thirty-six thousand um on the higher end, and again, that's based off the, the different um. The different percentages that can be used based on, this, again, this is a high-level estimate, so there isn't an exact percentage that's typically used. It, it can vary a little bit depending on the, the nature of the work. Um, so I think it sounded like everyone came to an agreement on a thirty-three thousand dollar contribution, which again falls within the range. That we had estimated um and based on our review.
Does this um. In any way, consider that the cost will go up every year and it. We might not get to where the money is spent or even received for a time, I know that.
There's a, oop, you keep going.
No.
I was gonna say, there, the co- construction contingency is about twenty-five percent, so it does account for. Um, you know, some uh price adjustments or things like that, or other items that may not necessarily be quantified in the estimate. Um, but typically it's based off of an estimate, we look at um weighted bid prices from Mast G O T or other projects. Um, to come up with that estimate um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are we talking about one traffic light, what are we talking about exactly here?
Yes.
We're talking about a traffic light, the traffic.
A traffic, signalizing a single intersection. It would be a fairly simple um traffic signal, probably two phases if not three, you know, it's a T intersection, so it's not. Um, a very complex intersection.
And how much would, in today's money, how much would that cost?
Uh, based on the comments that we had provided um. The, the applicant originally had estimated around five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, um with our additional comments for some items added in there, we were more in the range of. I think between um, let me pull it up quickly. Six hundred and fifty or seven hundred thousand dollars based on our comments, and then again, that, that traffic impact is applied to that cost, so. That may be a, an estimated cost to signalize the intersection, but their. Uh, project trips only have a small percentage impact on that cost, so the fair share cost is a percentage of that overall estimated construction cost.
So we're talking about something like five percent of the total cost?
I believe it was around five point six percent is what they had calculated, yes.
Where's the other ninety-five percent come from?
We're also, it's a separate kind of application, but we were also looking at this intersection and associated costs for. Other development projects that are under consideration for the town as well, just as a, a separate note. But that similarly would have the same kind of calculation, where it would be a percent of their traffic impact relative to a estimated construction cost.
So how many projects do we have to build then to, to pay for this, how many total? I mean, I'm not good at math, so just if you could round it for me, like, is it ten more projects or what?
Well, if you're trying, I don't think you can, there would have to be, you know, several other projects to fully fund a fair share cost, if that's what you're looking at. Um, the, the other costs for the traffic signal would have to come from other sources.
Yeah, we already have the MBTA right there, so, I mean, that's kind of already an issue, so then this is just adding to that. Essentially, so I don't think, I mean, the MBH, MBTA isn't gonna give us money for a traffic light, right? I mean, is that, does that happen or?
No.
Not, not directly, I think the, the state does give the town money to fund infrastructure in general, like, you know, for roads and, and such. But the, the disposition of that money is essentially up to the town administrator and DPW combined.
Yes, and all that money every year is dearly needed and used all over town. Was it, is that chapter ninety money, I think?
Chapter ninety, I, I don't know off the top of my head whether chapter ninety covers traffic signals, but.
Well, but the, the, the money she's, the, the money that we're talking about.
Yeah.
The, it's called chapter ninety money and just like all the other state. Payments, um, we keep looking for more and we don't get nearly enough, um but um. I think it, I don't know, not my problem, I guess, uh, you know, so- someone else. That'll be in the override, in the next override over the one we're coming up on.
Yeah, I don't know that we've gone to the point of identifying all potential sources of funding for this signal.
No, we haven't even started. No, it's, it's a, whatever, systemic concern for me, just.
Yeah, I. I think what, well, real quick, David, the, the point to me on this is. It's called a fair share for a reason, we don't want any one applicant to basically have to pay. You know, majority of them, of the money if their impact is not the majority of the traffic that's going to be hitting that intersection, that is. It is already traffic going through there, there's, it's a proportionate amount of impact in it, that's why it's a proportionate amount of funding. That's, I like a lot anyway.
Can you also consider though that it's, there's like a threshold, right? Like you don't need a traffic light and then you do.
And.
So if somebody brings you over that threshold, I mean, this could be the amount of traffic that's added, but it's bringing it over the threshold right now, you need the light.
Well, one of them.
Certain, who, sorry, just to think, certain warrants are, you know, met under certain conditions today, so. Additional warrants would be met, additional hours of warrants would be met with additional developments, so. Kind of already at that threshold of, a signal could start to be warranted now.
I think I, we've been told that the one movement is already. At uh level of service F.
Yes, the Pine Street approach particularly, yes, has the most impact, yeah.
One part of the day, that's the left turn off Pine Street onto.
By CBS? No, Pine, sorry, I'm wrong.
Pine, no, Pine Street onto thirty.
Right.
Um, the left turn there. And unfortunately, it's not a state road, not a state-supported road. All our other traffic lights have come on state roads and the state money. Uh, has pretty much paid for it.
Alright, I think we have a, a comment up there.
Thank you, Angela H U thirty Nelson, Street North Grafton, I'm in a butter to this area, very familiar with it. I just recently worked on a traffic light project, roughly ran um in excess of six hundred thousand dollars. Just keeping in mind that these projects, because they're handled um by the municipality. You're gonna be looking at prevailing wage rates, so the cost of all of this goes up for a town to take it on. And the project that I worked on, plenty industrialized area, plenty of existing buildings. But when another developer came in and brought in at four hundred parking spots, that developer took on the full cost. Of doing that intersection, and my concern as a resident is that if the town continues to approve projects like this. The part that I dealt with are the traffic accidents and the pedestrians that are hit, and then it becomes the lawsuits that come against the municipality. And it's for, it's for allowing this type of development to happen. And not have a proper means for people to safely be able to allow for ingress and egress, so. Hearing this um projected as we're gonna wait for more developments to come along and they're gonna pick up the cost. It's shameful, there's other words to use, but it's shameful to hear thirty-three to thirty-six thousand dollars. For a project with two hundred and thirty-three parking spots, so this is about the cost of doing business, you come to a municipality. You wanna develop whatever that development is, this is the cost of doing business, it creates traffic, more traffic than what's there today. So the other businesses that are in place, just as a gentleman said. That had an existing traffic impact, this is a brand-new impact, so waiting for others to come along. And putting it on the town to keep on waiting and bankrolling, um, this is really putting it on the townspeople. To create a proper safety measure, so with this, I would ask for further study and further review, but this does not at all. Seem like a fair contribution for the level of development and the use that's gonna happen on that road, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I'm uh. This is a fair share, the, the amount of contribution that this project will give to the intersection is roughly about five, five point five percent. If you take six fifty and you divide it by twenty, it's thirty-two five. Uh, it's, if, if the town had watched the intersection grow and had taken money from each applicant over the last forty or fifty years. Or if we had impact fees as an allowable way of doing business in Massachusetts, you'd have a pot of money already. But to get the last guy in the door uh for more than his relative contribution to the traffic is patently unfair. Fees have to be proportional, they, you can't get a million bucks for a thirty-three thousand dollar kind uh, uh, impact. And that's essentially what we have here, so we're more than happy to uh sign up for the thirty-three thousand. At the, uh, or prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy and accept that as a condition of the forty R plan approval. I hope that that's acceptable to the board.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, sir, when you say proportional, are you counting for the, what did they say, two hundred and thirty-three parking spaces? Is that what you're considering the proportional piece, or is it just that you're putting a development in and we need twenty more developments to pay for this light, which one?
Your traffic peer reviewer has indicated that our relative contribution to the intersection in a build scenario, seven years out. Will be about five to five and a half percent of the intersection overall traffic volume, and that's the fair share. If the, if it costs five hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars to put in the signal there. There are other people in the build scenario that are going to be coming online. And there's an opportunity to get ninety-five percent of the money from those people as they seek your approval through whatever permitting process they need. Whether it's a variance, a special permit, site plan approval, or in this case a forty R. I think it's important to note that this is, this is important housing for the community, town meeting voted for this. And so we're more or less partners in it, it was your application to the state under chapter forty R, we're the developer that's going along uh for the ride. Um, we, we have other fees that are weighty here in town that we have to bear. Uh, water and sewer come to mind as well as uh the building permit, which may or may not involve compliance with the new stretch code. So when you, when you total up those fees, they're well in excess of two million. Uh, and we're, you know, this is a drop in the bucket, but every nickel we can save makes the production of the housing that much more likely and. Uh, I think you've had some projects in the past that you've made deals with, uh, with development agreements and. It, it, when the construction mortgages go up to nine and a half percent, those don't get built.
Any other?
The, the, the thing is that I have to vote, among many other things, that. The traffic impacts are okay. And that's hard to do when we're at F and you're gonna add to it, so that, we'll see.
I. With, with all due respect, this is a forty R.
Well.
You're, this is a site plan approval, no is not an option. That's, the state has already committed to giving you a slot payment for the two hundred and thirty-three units that have been approved by town meeting. And there's not supposed to be a barrier between the construction phase of this and.
This, this is something to keep in mind, a forty R plan approval is not discretionary on the part of the planning board. It's not a discretionary permit.
That's correct.
It's, it's a by right use.
And that's because. You, you've earned the slot payment with the vote of the town meeting.
It's a shame that we couldn't let the town know that this is gonna cost us another six hundred and fifty thousand, I know it's weighty for you, but then it's weighty for the town as well. And it's, I mean, you're right, we have made a lot of deals with a lot of developers in town to get projects passed and pushed through. And we just had a discussion from someone in the au- audience that mentioned that we needed a traffic study and we don't have a town traffic study. So, you know, you, you know, you're, you're coming to us and you're asking us to put in two hundred and thirty-three parking spots that the state. Is giving you the rights to do, but it is coming at a cost to our community. Now, we all have to take out of our pockets again to pay for a traffic light, so that you can build a giant apartment complex and make a weighty amount of money. So there's two sides to this story.
That's, that's a really distorted way of looking at it, we're contributing five percent to the total volume. But we're not contributing two hundred and thirty-three cars every hour, that, that's broken down into peak hour, AM, P hour, a peak hour, PM. Trips and overall, according to your peer reviewer, it's a contribution to the intersection of about five percent. So it's, this is exactly proportional to what your peer reviewer says we owe.
And as, as our peer reviewer said as well, it's, it's a very lucky scenario that we probably need the traffic light today. The turning, left turn from Pine Street onto thirty is already a, basically an F. And with this is one of the projects that, as Mr. Robbins mentioned, is a by right use during a plan approval. It's also something that the town has known well before this ever proposal is an issue with that traffic, that traffic corner. There's other developments coming online and that, and that have been approved in the past that will be adding to traffic in that area. This is something that we would need, whether this project is moving forward or not. We will likely need to add a traffic light at that corner, this is not a matter of saying, oh, we're adding. Two hundred plus parking spots, so now we need to have them pay a larger amount for the traffic light, to me, it's a no. We're adding five percent of the trips that will be impacting at that intersection. And that is the fair share impact that we're asking the developer to provide and they've agreed to.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Anything else from the board? I have another public comment coming up here.
Uh, just a point of clarification, um, and sorry for my ignorance, but I'm seeing here two hundred and thirty-three residential units. And then I'm also hearing two hundred and thirty-three parking spaces. It seems inconceivable to me that in this day and age, we have one car. Parking, like, one parking space to one unit, so I just wanna make sure that the math's here and we're not really talking about four hundred parking spaces. Four hundred cars as opposed to two hundred and thirty-three, 'cause then we really need sixty-five or sixty-six thousand, thank you very much, I'm David Barnard, sixty-eight, Liston Street.
Bill Lovett with the Claremont Companies, uh, good evening, thank you for your time. Uh, the, there are two hundred and thirty-three residential units. And the parking ratio here is about one point six to one space, so. Forgive me, I don't know the math off the top of my head, but we, it's not a one-to-one ratio, however, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but. The parking study is done based on the number of um trips generated by the unit mix and the two hundred and thirty-three cars. So the, the thirty-three to sixty-six thousand is not a, it's not a one-to-one and it's not a two-to-one ratio.
Yes, I think that's important to keep in mind when you're thinking of parking, you're thinking of traffic. And the, the, the traffic study is what's driving this fair share discussion. Traffic study is based upon the, you know, the, the number of units, the presumed occupancy of the units. And, and, and traffic patterns, it's basically based on the, the, the expected traffic during the busy hour of the morning and the evening. And that's only vaguely related to the number of parking spaces.
And, and as a, a reminder as well, we, we've, yeah, part of our site plan approval. Is a connection between the property and the MBTA parking lot, which will be an accessible connection between the two. In order to keep cars off of, off of the roads, so hopefully that's a, a contribution as well.
You're saying cars that would go from your project down to the train station?
No, I'm saying that we're investing in a, in a path that goes from our project down to the train station.
Understand, but, and that's supposed to reduce the cars, but. All the, the only, the only car situation that's gonna help is someone who drives down to the station from the project. That's the only place, you know, that, that's where the walk goes.
Understood, so we're, we're trying to keep cars off the road from people trying, walking or driving down from the property down to the parking lot.
I would argue that, because I'd be one of the people that would think this way, if I had to get my car and drive anyway to get to even around the corner to the train station, I might decide, you know what? I'm just gonna drive the rest of the way to where I need to go. Go down Pine, take a left, head toward, you know, the next train stop, essentially, where I could just walk down the road, you know, down the path, get on the train, and then not have to worry about even driving at all. That's a consideration that if it was me, I would do.
I think there is sort of an assumption here that the proximity of these residences to the train station is going to attract residents who will be using the train to commute into Boston. So, yeah. An equivalent development not near a train station would generate X amount of traffic per hour. And I don't recall off the top of my head, but I, I think that the traffic study, the traffic, the trip generation is not necessarily taking into account a, an actual reduction in traffic due to people walking to the train station. So, the trip generation is sort of worst, likely to be a worst-case scenario compared to what reality will end up producing, but that's difficult to predict.
Agreed.
What would be the average walking distance for a resident to the point in the station where you can get, get down to the train? Half a mile?
No.
It looked like a good bit. I didn't measure it. I couldn't measure it.
If they were to walk around Millennium Drive and out of the park and around?
No, with, with this path that you're providing.
Oh, 300 yards, maybe?
Almost a quarter of a mile.
Well, I'm including the parking lot of the MBTA stations, about a third of that distance.
I'm thinking about how far I could walk. And it's uphill going home.
It's compliant. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? I had one, one question. This is more of a curiosity question than anything else. As far as I could tell on the plans, you have four EV charging stations. Just wondering if there was the potential to add more in the future?
Yes. Typically, what we're doing today is we're putting in a number of stations with, we're putting the infrastructure in for additional stations, conduit down the line. So, we can... All you're doing is dropping the heads and after.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear.
Dave, I had one question.
Yes, sir.
Are we providing our, the, is it, is there a plan to provide any kind of shuttle service like the other MBTA communities that have developed across the other, near the other stations along the commuter rail? Are you planning to provide any kind of shuttle service that would drop off people, pick up at regular intervals? Paid or otherwise?
No, with the direct connection via the walkway that's on the site plan approval, we, we do not intend to have a, any type of shuttle. It would be redundant.
Nope.
Okay. For the winter, I'm, I'm someone who commutes fairly regularly into Boston and during the winter. There was another property that we had discussed a couple of years ago. It's not that easy to walk across unless it is being, the pathway is being maintained and lighted and so on and so forth.
The path is designed to be lit as well as maintained.
You be ma... You people will be maintaining it?
The path, yes. Yes. To, up to the MBTA lot. Yes. Unless you'd like to, then we can arrange for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the board, comments? Anybody else?
This is Daniel Gregoire, 189 Worcester Street. I just want to come up here because I know that so few people actually ever come up and say positive things about new developments in town and apartments and access to the train station. And I just, I'm actually really excited about what you're proposing. And the idea that folks might be able to walk from their homes to the train station is very appealing. So, I support it.
Thank you. Colleen?
Colleen Roy, 53 Elmwood Street. And I just want to add on to what he said. I support this project. I think it's gonna be great for Grafton. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Sure.
Cheryl Inreno, 89 Keith Health Road. I'm really excited about this project because hopefully my children will be able to commute into Boston after renting lovely apartments there. But I had a traffic. Everyone is concerned about how much traffic this is gonna generate. The vast majority of the traffic going through that intersection is people coming from 20 down to 30, or 30 up to 20. And that's the traffic that's causing the backup. It's not gonna be 230 cars coming out of one development.
Thank you. The other comments?
I think it's a total of 389 parking spaces on the, on the proposal. 389. Just to clarify that.
Do we have anything left to do in the context of a public hearing? We've received all the information that we expect to receive?
Yes. Yes. I, again, you know, I closed the loop with the other departments that had outstanding issues. Civil concerns are satisfied. It was just this topic. So, I, I don't have any other concerns in the planning department. The site plans are uploaded into the record, so I, I think it's just a matter of the board making, you know, making their decision, how they want to proceed.
Does somebody have a motion?
Yeah, I do. I move that we close the hearing and direct staff to prepare a draft decision.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Ms. Bresnahan?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger?
Aye.
And Mr. Venkatesharaman?
Aye.
And Mr. Albin Swotzai. Motion carried unanimously. The hearing is closed. Staff will get to work on a draft decision, and with any luck, we'll be able to review the draft decision in our next meeting in three weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank everybody for your comments, for your patience throughout this process.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Now, we have our last public hearing. This is a continuation of the hearing that we began back on June 10th in Shrewsbury. This is a request for a special permit and site plan approval at 12 Centennial Drive, 105 West Borough Road, 105 Rear West Borough Road, 136 Rear Nelson Road. Pro... I should remember how to pronounce the name. Prologis or Logus?
That's correct.
Which is correct.
Prologis.
Prologis. Great. Well, where are we at? I think we, we had a tentative hearing schedule set up where we planned this evening to be talking about civil engineering, site grading, stormwater, et cetera.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Mark Donahue from Fletcher-Tilton. On behalf of the applicant, with me is John Perry from Langen Engineering, who are the civil engineers who have designed the site. As you indicated, we had the initial kickoff meeting, and we gave you kind of a Reader's Digest version of the civil engineering to the site. This evening, John has a more detailed presentation so you can understand how we are making the site work essentially for the building, focusing particularly on stormwater. You might recall from our initial conversation, the site is somewhat bifurcated as far as impervious area. The facility, the primary facility, the industrial portion of the warehouse access is from Centec Boulevard. The employee parking lot is accessed from Centennial Drive and then has an emergency connection and a pedestrian walkway to the facility. And so, Mr. Perry will focus particularly on that section in Grafton, but we're glad to answer any particular questions you might have. So, with your permission, John?
Fiona, did you want to say anything by way of, you know, introduction?
I don't have much, much to add. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we'll be following that schedule that's uploaded into the meeting materials. So, I guess I would just make a note that if folks, you know, have particular concerns outside of, you know, civil engineering, stormwater, lighting, and the site, site plan review elements, that is what we will be focusing on. We, you know, there's, we kind of continue to coordinate with, with Mark and, you know, let him know of any, you know, feed, feedback that we've received, questions. There was, I believe at the last hearing, there was a couple of questions about MIPA status and some of that, which Mark, I'll leave it to the applicant to address. But yeah, for, I don't really have anything much to add in terms of this evening. I mean, I think it's turned over to the applicant in detail.
Yeah, right. Just a reminder in terms of the review schedule, traffic and related topics are tentatively planned to be the subject of next month's meeting.
Correct.
So, I'm sure, I, I, I would speculate that maybe there will be questions about traffic. We'll deal with those, not tonight, but at the next meeting. So, hold, you know, hold those, and you know, this, this is gonna go on for, this process is gonna go on for at least two or three more meetings. So, we'll have a chance to answer all questions eventually, but focus on the topics for tonight.
Mr. Chair, I will say that our peer reviewer is, is here, Mr. Mashad of MDM. He did just, I know there was some discussion at the last hearing about some traffic questions, so out of an abundance of caution, but with the schedule...
Yeah. I just want to be sure you've heard the discussion about the intersection where the traffic light might be needed.
Hard to miss it.
Hmm?
Hard to miss it.
Oh, okay.
We do, but just to clarify the record, Mr. Mishow is actually our traffic consultant in this case. He's not doing a peer review. That's right.
Sorry, I invited him. Yes, sorry. He's typically, normally, he is the town peer review traffic consultant.
He's done peer reviews for us more than once.
Yes. Sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
John?
Fiona, do you need to promote me to our presenter?
Are you? I'll share. It's, I have it pulled up.
That's perfect. And I'll just say next slide when I want next slide.
Sure.
Okay, great. So, for the record again, I'm John Perry, civil engineer from Langen. We're Site Civil Landscape Architects as well. With me tonight is Ashan Suking, our landscape architect, who's gonna present a few slides. And I'll get right into it. As Mark mentioned before, we're, you know, really focused on the site plan. I'm gonna go through some site plan aspects and focus on stormwater, and then Ashan will take it away with some site lighting and landscaping. So, we presented this slide. This is just the team here. We had a joint meeting back on June 10th with everyone where we gave a bit of a brief overview of the project, did kind of a little bit on each topic. Again, tonight, we'll just get into a little more of detail there. So, I don't know that we need to... Yeah, it's perfect. So, again, this is the site plan context here. This is the site, which is a 212-acre parcel of land with frontage on Centec Boulevard in Shrewsbury, as well as Centennial Drive in Grafton. Part of the site obviously is in Grafton, the majority is in Grafton, where a portion of it is in Shrewsbury. And, you know, we're meeting all of the zoning compliance, say for a couple of items we're requesting special permit on. And one of the things I wanted to point out was the impervious area is well under requirement, right? We're required to, the maximum we're allowed is 75%. We're proposing 30%. So, think of it in different terms. We have 70% open space on the site here. We've done a very detailed job of trying to work the site plan so that we have maximized green space on site. Fiona, if you want to go to the next slide, I can zoom into that. And again, we're focused, the development, on the northern portion of the site. So, the plan right is, is north in this case here. We've been able to manipulate the building architecture to fit with the site. So, a lot of times, it's the building that you're trying to fit, you know, with these industrial-type buildings that the tenant has their preferred layout of how they want to run their operations. We worked with the tenant on changing the building architecture specifically so that we could save green space in that we did not encroach on any of the wetland or wetland buffers on the site. We've been able to balance, balance the site plan with grading, balanced the site with, from an earthwork standpoint. And I'll get into some of the grading in some sections in a few minutes here. I did want to point out the kind of heavy dash line in the middle of the site, which is the, the town line, and point out that we are in the industrial and office zoning in Grafton here with a small portion of the southern plan left area in the water protection overlay district. And as shown on the last slide, I believe, we are well within the impervious area allowances for the water protection overlay district. We are allowed 25% impervious area, and we're only proposing 7%. I do want to point on this slide that we are gaining employee access from Centennial Drive. That's where all the employees will enter the site. And we have separated employee traffic from truck traffic for safety reasons and for operational reasons as well. And all the trucks will enter the site from Centec Boulevard, not from Centennial Drive. Okay, next slide, please. We are requesting, we are proposing 140 reserved parking spaces. When you look at the weighted, we presented a weighted average parking calculation as where part of the building is in Grafton, part of it is in Shrewsbury, and each town has a different requirement for parking. So, when you work the numbers out with the weighted average percentage of building in Grafton, percentage of building in Shrewsbury versus the individual requirements, we calculate that 970 spaces would be required for, under the Grafton requirements. The tenant has, you know, their standard is they require 830 parking spaces, and that's what we're proposing. That has been studied by the tenant over multiple similar buildings and facilities. And we, you know, don't want to build more parking than is necessary. We want to be able to save, you know, open space. But we are showing these areas highlighted in orange on the slide where we are proposing the reserve parking, which would get us to that zoning requirement. One of the comments from Graves in the peer review letter, which we received a few weeks ago, and we are working on responding to, did question the location of the reserve parking. One on the kind of top right of this page here is in an area where there's some topography, some proposed, a proposed slope, and we are redesigning that to pull that back down a little bit to flatten it out so we would get out of that slope. It's certainly buildable. And then the other one on the bottom left of the screen here is the parking is proposed within the location of a surface detention basin or infiltration basin. And if that ever needed to be built, the idea is that the infiltration would just be underground infiltration. So, we'll just put it under the parking lot. So, both are certainly buildable, and we'll just clarify that in writing to our responses to Graves. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, we are requesting the board to allow the building be constructed up to 45 feet tall, which is allowed under the zoning bylaws. And I want to point out here, I think when we met back in June, we talked about the building footprint and the building height. There were some questions on the different heights of the building. There were some questions on the different heights of the building. On the ends here, shown in gray, the skinny wings, that is an area where inside the brown trucks, the brown delivery trucks will be inside the building. It's not used for sorting packages, so that can be a little bit lower ceiling height. And in the middle, where the building's a little wider, shown in blue, that is the sortation area, so that they need a little more clear height for their conveyors and units inside there. So that's where the tallest portion of the building would be. So that the maximum building height of that area is 44.4 feet, as calculated looking at the average grade around that portion of the building, which is how the height needs to be calculated. So kind of shown in green there is where we looked at the average grade. And in blue, that's the portion of the highest portion of the building in Grafton. So that's the 44.4 feet. So, next slide, please. Okay, so this slide shows fairly simple cut and fill figure. So the areas in red are cut or excavation, and the areas in green would be fill. So essentially, we have been able to balance the site. You know, there will be some material that needs to be imported just for natural construction processes as far as, you know, bringing in material for dense grade under the parking lot and pavements and, you know, build the slabs, things like that. But all of the material on site, all the earthwork is essentially balanced. So we've been able to minimize how many, minimize the construction activity essentially. In order to do that, you know, we will be building some retaining walls. And specifically around the areas that are proposed to be filled. So we have the walls labeled there. There are, I think, seven altogether. If you go to the next slide, it will represent, a little bit easier to see, I think, some of the walls and some of the grading sections. So we did cut a few different sections through what we thought to be kind of the key locations on site here to show the different types of walls and proximity to surrounding areas. And some of these sections are cut through Shrewsbury and some are cut through Grafton, but I'm going to go through all of them just to give you a complete picture. So this one here, section AA, looks basically from Stony Hill Road and Shrewsbury to the site. And you can see, the neighborhood's about, I think it's about 1,000 feet away roughly. And as you look towards, I don't have my mouse, I guess, but that retaining wall just to the left of the building, essentially, that shows what I was mentioning before, where that's in that fill condition. So we've been building a retaining wall to flatten up the site there. What this shows essentially is that, you know, folks from that neighborhood will be looking through trees. They won't be able to see the building at all. If you go to the next slide. So this is similar section, but kind of opposite condition. So this is where we're cutting. And you can see there, instead of a retaining wall, we actually have a slope, right? So the site and the building are set down in the ground. And again, this section shows essentially that folks from that neighborhood would be looking through, almost about 1,000 feet worth of trees. And actually, even if there were no trees there, you wouldn't be able to see anything. You'd be looking to the side of the hill. Next slide, please. This is a section from Centec Boulevard, and I realize this is showing all area in Shrewsbury. But I wanted to show that it is, the building is about 1,200 feet off of Centec. And we are maintaining a nice natural buffer, as you can see, kind of to the right of that section there. We have a 50 to 60-foot swath of fairly dense vegetation that will be maintained. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a section looking from West Bar Road into the site. Again, about 1,200 feet away essentially from the building to the road. As you can see, there is, kind of on the right side of the section there, a fairly tall retaining wall, as mentioned before in the grading plan. And then the site flattens out a bit. And you can also see the commuter rail and West Bar Road. And as you see that dashed red line view section, you know, again, if you're on West Bar Road, you're just looking through trees and you wouldn't be able to see the building. Next. Okay, and then this is the last section we have here. And again, this is just cut from the south side of the site. Over from, looking essentially from Nelson Street into the site, which is about 3,000 feet away, would be Nelson Street to the building. There's a few thousand feet of trees between that we plan to save and maintain, and as well as some open body of water. And you can also get a sense for the retaining wall on that, the edge of the building there as well. And again, that, it is hard to, a little hard to see because the scale is so stretched out. Again, it's 3,000 feet long. But we looked at, you know, a general size of, you know, a house in all of these sections looking from the second-story window through the trees, essentially showing that, again, you'd be looking through vegetation and not at the building. So, next slide, please. Okay, I want to jump into stormwater a bit. And these are just a list of, I'm not going to go through every single standard, but these are the list of the state stormwater standards, as well as, we follow the state stormwater standards as well as the local stormwater standards, which are, require a higher level of treatment. And as you can see in the kind of red asterisks there in the bottom right-hand portion, you know, under the local stormwater standards, we're required to treat 90% of the total suspended solids and remove 60% of the total phosphorus. And we have met all of those stormwater standards. We did get the Graves peer review back on stormwater. They've agreed we've met all those standards. We just need to work on documenting a few, I guess, details, you know, for them. They had questioned on a couple of the pipe slopes. It was very, very minimal comments, in my opinion, from them. Next slide, please. Okay, so in order to meet those standards, we are implementing a series of stormwater best management practices. And we have a mixture of infiltration basins, shown in the light blue. We have a bi-retention basin, or other words, rain garden, shown in the purple. We have two subsurface detention systems, shown orange there within our truck parking area. We have two detention basins, which don't, they're detention because they don't infiltrate and specifically because in that particular area, you know, there's ledge or there's more, you know, silty soils. And then we have two subsurface infiltration systems shown there in green. So the vast majority of our stormwater treatment is through the infiltration basins, as you can see. Next slide, please. So just some images of what these things look like. You know, as I mentioned before, the infiltration basins, kind of standard image on the top left there. They're open, they're natural, they'll be vegetated to maintain that natural look. Very similar look is the bi-retention basin shown on the right. And then the two on the bottom, these go underground, you'll never see them. But just to give everyone a sense of what they are, on the left there is kind of some standard subsurface infiltration chambers. You see they have the open bottom, they sit on crushed down. They, you know, hold water and they will recharge the groundwater. And on the right, as I showed before, in that orange, those orange areas within the truck parking area will be subsurface detention. And we're proposing detention there instead of infiltration so that we can keep the water. Those are in areas of fill. And in somewhat proximate area to the retaining walls, we want to keep water out of the ground in that area so that we don't cause, you know, excess moisture where we don't want it essentially. Next slide, please. So this is just a typical treatment train of how we actually treat stormwater for the 90% TSS and 60% total phosphorus. We'll implement street sweeping, which you get a little bit of credit for. But then standard deep-sump-hooded catch basins, water quality units, so there'll be a few proprietary filter-type units or separator-type units. And then the infiltration basins themselves. And the last point where everything discharges to, if water's discharging, because if you're infiltrating, the vast majority will be just going to the ground. But any overflow from the infiltration basins or discharge from the detention basins will go through this level spreader, so it spreads the flow out over a curb, over a wide area. So it's a nice laminar flow over a vegetated area, so you're not creating like a point discharge and causing erosion issues. Next slide, please. And just a few numbers pulled from our stormwater report. And I wanted to reiterate that, you know, we, the two have really important stormwater standards that I wanted to mention were the water quality, right? So we are required to treat one inch over the impervious area of the site. And that is specific to this type of site. On smaller sites, you only need to treat half an inch. On this site, we need to treat one inch. But we are actually treating two inches, so we're exceeding that by a factor of two, what we're required to do. And similar on the recharge volumes, we are actually recharging almost four and a half times more volume than we need to recharge the groundwater. Next slide, please. Snow storage has been, has come up a few times, a few questions we've had on this, and we wanted to present this slide. These areas are documented within the site plan. But the blue hatching here on this slide really kind of points out the areas we've dedicated for snow storage. So every area here is, as I just mentioned, a dedicated snow storage area. And based on some calculations we've run, we feel that would accommodate two and a half to three inches of snow, probably more when it's packed down to an actual snow pile. And then beyond that, there'd be an operational, you know, there'd be operations by the tenant for snow storage to use some empty parking spaces or truck parking or empty space that they have. There's plenty of area, obviously, on site for excess snow storage if needed.
Just on this slide in particular, one quick question, if I may. The one storage location on the northern side of the building, is that against a drop or is that against a hill that's right there? I'm curious just because it does, at least on this one slide alone, it appears extremely close to the property line and.
Yeah, there's a retaining wall there. It's not a very tall wall, but there's a wall near there. But all the snow storage areas slope back towards the parking lot.
Okay.
And we did that very specifically so that any snow melt would run through the stormwater system and get the treatment that it needs.
That's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, exactly. Next slide, please. Quickly touching on utilities here, we have had discussions with all the utility providers. And I think this slide's fairly self-explanatory, but essentially water, sewer, gas will be coming off of Centennial Drive. And electric will be coming, electric and telecom will be coming off of Centec. And we've been talking to Selco about that. There will be, shown in green, in sewer, there will be a couple of pump stations on site to convey sewer via force main to an existing gravity manhole on the end of Centennial Drive. And again, we've coordinated utility connections and capacities with all of the required providers at this point. Next. Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Ashan for a few minutes to go through lighting and planting.
I'll take the opportunity at this break to suggest the board may wish to vote to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'm going to take this as a non-negotiable motion. President?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Assinger?
Aye.
Mr. Venkatesharaman?
Aye.
Mr. Robbins outside. Motion carried, we can, the carried doesn't leave at 10 o'clock.
Good. Ashan Suking, project landscape architect at Langin. So I'll be, as Sean mentioned, I'll be talking about lighting and planting. So as you see here in the lighting plan that we have, there's a series of driveways and parking lots. So we are looking at light fixtures that are pole-mounted and building-mounted. As you can tell by the parking lots, those are going to be pole-mounted. And then within the areas around the building is going to be building-mounted. We are designing this to meet IESNA safety standards, which is Illuminating Engineering Society of America, to provide health and safety levels for lighting. But at the same time, we're designing the lighting to direct any light away from wetlands or property lines. Next slide, please. So you can see here, the proposed light fixtures that we're using are LED, full cutoff, dark sky compliant, which means that it's 3,000 Kelvin for the color temperature. And if you're not familiar with dark sky compliant, it's a guideline that we try to, or they try to reduce any light pollution on the site and really just illuminating the areas that need to be lit. Some examples that we've done before, the two images on the top, you can see this is one of our projects that we've done in a case very similar to this. We're lighting the parking lot and beyond the site, you don't see anything. It's pitch black. And then the actual fixtures themselves, they have a houseside shield. Traditionally, the houseside shield would be behind the actual light fixture and be like one fill. But in this case, the newer technology for the actual light fixtures, the houseside shield are actually right behind each of the LED fixture or LED bulb. So you're really directing light to where you want it to go. Next slide, please. For the planting design, as an overview, the landscape was really strategically designed to adapt to the conditions of the site in terms of topography, the layout, view sheds, and also, you know, just the general nature of the existing condition of the site as well as looking at existing trees and things like that. On Centennial, we're preserving most of the existing trees along the frontage that you see here. So where we do have some grading disturbances or around the parking lot, we're adding in the additional trees to kind of beef up the buffer to provide that additional screening from beyond the property and even, you know, from the wetland side, as you can see here. Where we do have open space with any disturbance, we are proposing a wildflower seed mix, a native wildflower seed mix, which is, you can see like the flowers beyond the parking lot. Those are going to be a good host for native pollinator species like birds, butterflies, and animals like that to kind of, you know, provide that habitat to them. Next, please. Again, as you can see here, the plant palette that we've chosen are, you know, you would see a lot of these, all of these species locally in the area. So we're pretty confident that what we're selecting are going to thrive on this site. And, you know, in terms of irrigation, just something I want to cover real quick, there's no permanent irrigation and we're only proposing to do irrigation within the establishment period. So that's temporary irrigation for these plants.
Forgive my ignorance, any of these evergreens on this slide?
Yes, the pineus strobus, white pines.
Thank you.
So I guess just in summary, and we're glad to answer any questions from the board, that from the engineering viewpoint as to the impact of the site, two factors drive the design. One is to limit the visual impact of the site. We think we've done that and demonstrated it from abutting properties, particularly residential properties, most significantly in Shrewsbury, but also from the existing public ways by maintaining a vegetated, the existing vegetative buffer along Centec and to the extent possible along Centennial. The lighting is state of the art so as to reduce any kind of visual impact of creating an aura of light, for lack of a better term, as one looks at the site in some fashion. And we have boosted particularly the landscaping in the Centennial Drive parking lot for, which is the employee parking lot as it is more conducive than the truck parking for that and also presents a good front door as far as for the employees and anybody who might still be using that. The second charge from an engineering viewpoint is reduce the impact of all the impervious surface being created. As John indicated, we are far below what is required or permitted for impervious area with what's done. But more importantly than just being there and meeting that number is all the steps the Langin has built into the plan to greatly exceed the requirements of both the state and local from stormwater standards. Water quality being more than twice and recharge being four times more than required. And so from a site view, from the engineering viewpoint that we're looking at, we're, we're pretty proud of the plan and glad to answer any particular questions the board may have.
Great. Yeah. Any questions from the board on anything that we've seen so far? I'm hearing nothing. Any, any questions or comments from the audience out here regarding any of the information that's been presented this evening?
Hi, good evening. Angela H Chu, Nelson Street. So longtime resident in the area. This is helpful to see these plans. Unfortunately, I don't see any improvement from where we were in June with the planning board nor with the conservation commission regarding the efforts on TSS, total suspended solids. This is an honor system that's set up for sweeping. It's not anything that the town's going to be able to enforce. This part fifty-eight acres around that area are wetlands. What we're talking about is runoff from the impervious surfaces. We're talking about further contaminating the waterways with phosphates. We can see what's already happened to Wendell Pond, UPS's existing site in Shrewsbury. We've got water bodies for residents that haven't been able to be used for decades, that used to be swimmable, are no longer swimmable, have never been able to come back to that, can't fish in them. What they're here asking for is a special permit. Part of the discussion that happened in June is what are the numbers that you're really dealing with? So tonight, it's not the forty feet that we heard about in June, it's really forty-five feet. So for residents that live in that area, we look at this and say, office light industrial. This is a twenty-four hour, seven day a week operation. Not what the residents signed up for. We have wells. I'm not sure why it is that when we look at what's been uploaded to the website that we don't have any comments coming on the use of our natural resources for the water and for sewer. The impacts to this, we don't have any information that's being shared with the residents regarding what's a safe yield. What's a safe yield for us to be able to count on? We've got almost three hundred truck bays going in. They'd like to tell us that they don't like dirty trucks. Two hundred and fifty to three hundred gallons to wash a single truck. Where is all this water going? So they talk about the catch basins and they say that they're, that they're really doing good things for the wetlands. They're talking about backfilling wetlands. There's three vernal pools on the site. They're listed as possible vernal pools. We hear nothing coming from this developer about going and having those vernal pools certified. And what happens with the vernal pools, these lights that they're talking about, these high-tech lights are shining right in on a vernal pool that's set up right near the fuel recharging area. So this doesn't sound like it's good for Grafton on many levels and it sounds like they could do a lot better from where we were in June. Here we are in July and there's not much improvement. The wild seed, the flowers, the trees that they're talking about. You can put all the wildflower seed that you want out there. What is this really going to do for the wildlife corridor? Just today I had three deer coming in, into my yard from this area. We have deer. We have over two hundred and forty bird species in this area. It's a wildlife corridor and I'm going to keep repeating that. Coming to the board meetings, encouraging other residents to speak up. The wildlife in this area is getting pushed out. What we used to have for dogs roaming in the neighborhood, we have coyotes. So keep building, keep building, keep pushing it into the neighbors and we'll be the next set of residents that'll be on the evening news who can't have their pets out in their yard because they've got coyotes out there. There's nowhere else for this wildlife to be able to go. I heard the mention of the MIPA process. With great pride, it was said in the conservation commission meeting, we don't need MIPA. We didn't do any alternatives analysis. We're just coming to your town. We're asking for a special permit and we're just going to build. This is good. This is good for their industry. I don't see what they're presenting as really taking into mind what's going to be good for all of Grafton. I'm not opposed to business in Grafton. What I'm opposed to is a known polluter who has contributed to creating a situation for Grafton residents where they can't use bodies of water that used to be swimmable and fishable. And I just don't hear anything good happening other than their honor system for their street sweeping of total suspended solids. This is the equivalent of people saying, I'm not going to throw out all of my household trash into the waterway. I'm only going to throw out twenty percent of it. Anything that floats is going to be making its way into our waterways. What's the cost to all of us as residents to have to clean this? And so that's what I look at. We have receiving notices from our water district letting us know that our water rates have gone up ten percent, that we don't have the infrastructure in place to meet the EPA standards. And the same is true with sewer. And so we have a large industrial development coming in and as residents, we're not seeing any commentary coming from water or sewer as to what's going to happen with our wells that are going to be drawn down on. What's the safe yield? What's our backup? Our backup is to go to other towns and ask for water. We don't have a natural body of water that we can draw from when our wells come down, when the water in the wells is, is drawn down on. So I'm concerned about having such a large industry come in and there doesn't appear to be any information for this particular project regarding water and sewer impacts for the town, nor is there any contribution being offered by this developer to help the town be able to build up our water and sewer infrastructure so that we can meet the higher standards that have been set by the EPA. And last but not least, we have other communities around us who are battling with PFAS. What are the chemicals that are going to be used to be washing these trucks with? What's going to be making its way into our waterways? Once we become a community that has contaminated wells, we don't have any piping near what other communities in central mass are looking at. We have nowhere else to get our water but from other local communities and those local communities are also dealing with the concerns of PFAS. I look at the town in Natick and Natick is dealing with this as well, having contaminated wells and having to draw from the Mass Water Resources Authority. And so that starts to concern me. Where are we going to be able to get our water from if we're not cognizant of what's happening with impervious surfaces? When all of the water can't be cleaned, it's going into the ground and it's making its way into our water bodies. Thank you.
I have a question for you, ma'am. You mentioned that there wasn't an AMIPA study. I thought all these projects had to get an AMIPA study.
This is, this is the question that was asked and the developer can certainly speak to that. But what I heard on the record is that there is no MIPA process that's been undertaken. So no alternative sites that have been looked at.
You, you seem to be saying that you expect your wells to be drawn down. What's going to draw them down?
The use of the water, the use of the water. They're talking.
Where, where is their water coming from? Is it coming from the ground or is it coming from the water district?
Water district.
So they're piping water in. I don't see how that's drawing your wells down.
No, I don't have a well in Grafton. That's where our water is coming from. So as residents, that's where we're all, we're all, unless we have a private well, we're drawing it from the town.
But, but that was one of your complaints.
We're drawing from the town. There's no information from the town what our safe yield is, how much water we can release per day, what our backup supply is. So in many communities, they'll tell their residents, it'll say, here's what your safe yield is, how much, here's what your backup supply is.
Do we, Fiona, we should have asked the water district about available water?
Yes, so they did receive the request for comment, but I'll follow up with them again.
Okay.
Should we get?
Maybe we'll find out.
That, that would be, that'd be very helpful because it's a concern. They talk about irrigation on the site as well. But the biggest concern, the biggest consumption of the water intake appears to be for the truck washing bays. And there's two hundred and eighty-seven trucks, truck bays that are set up.
I'll be wondering about your water usage with all the truck washing and whatever. So do you, do you recycle the water or do you just keep using?
The, the system is a recycling system. I think what would be helpful to the board is we will outline in writing, so it'll be on the website in detail, the process of the, the washing and what the loss factor is and the like, rather than try to give it to you now. But I think putting it in writing would make more sense. As to a, a couple of the points that Ms. H Chu made, if I might, Mr. Chairman. The project meets state standards for TSS as, as John has indicated. It is not an honor system. The stormwater plan includes an operation maintenance plan for the project. We would anticipate that compliance with that operation maintenance plan, which includes the street sweeping, would be a condition of approval. Some communities want to actually see third-party reports on that and we're amenable if that's a concern somehow that, that the tenant or the user, which is a Fortune one hundred company owning an awful lot of buildings around the world, somehow it's going to be irresponsible. Ms. H Chu somehow attributed the condition of Wendell Pond solely upon the UPS facility. I would respectfully suggest that's an unfair characterization of the UPS operation. To point out the commitment of UPS, they are contributing in excess of one point two million dollars to the town of Shrewsbury to extend sewer up Route twenty to include their facility and other facilities to mitigate any impacts there. The vernal pools have been addressed through the conservation. We can touch on those here, but they are not being touched in any fashion. They are being treated as vernal pools even though they are not formally certified. And finally, with regard to the wildlife corridor, I point out again that more than seventy percent of the space is being left as open space and therefore there is more than adequate area to both houses and the habitat of any wildlife that might be there. The question has come up a couple of times with regard to MIPA, so let me address it so you can hear the answer. MIPA is a process by which the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs vets projects prior to a state approval. They are not approval process themselves, rather they are vetting process to assist state agencies in giving permits. In order to qualify or need to meet MIPA, you have two different requirements. One is, and the first one is, there needs to be state action. There needs to be a state permit required for your project. Second is certain thresholds as far as how big your project is essentially, as it triggers it. This project does not meet the first step. This project does not require any state approvals in order to proceed for a number of different reasons. It is a locally permitted project, which is admittedly somewhat unique for a project to this size, but it is, that's where it stands as far as that's concerned. John, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
I could address some of the stormwater questions as well. With the street sweeping, you only get very little credit for street sweeping in the treatment train anyhow. And we've looked at that without street sweeping. We still meet the ninety percent TSS removal. But we can, we can provide documentation showing that as well. With phosphorus, although we are meeting the sixty percent, I mentioned before, we're meeting the sixty percent removal rate. We're actually more like ninety to a hundred percent on the removal rate for phosphorus. And I would mention too that we've met with the conservation commission and they have asked us to look into some ideas around more LID techniques within the employee parking lots. We may be also including things like, you know, a little bit of previous asphalt and places like that. So we'll have even more recharge volume as well. And I will say on the truck wash, we, we will have a rainwater harvesting setup. So we'll be taking roof runoff from one of the buildings and using that for part of our water for the truck wash system.
Mr. Chair, I have just two questions.
I have a hand up on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To get to that.
Go ahead, let them go.
I think, I think the, the hand raising on Zoom has probably been waiting there for a while. Brian. Go ahead, Brian.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, Brian Mill, Nelson Street. Just back to the stormwater management that was brought up. I'm curious to know, you've got some retention systems, you have detention systems. When they're at capacity, where is the overflow going? What are they tied into the, the town's stormwater system? I can, I have a couple more questions if you want to answer them or I'll continue. Has the design team considered a cistern system to capture any of the stormwater to repurpose it? More so especially for the irrigation systems that are being implemented? Thirdly, I saw a, a, a cut on the light pole fixture. You've got a number of wall sconces. Is there a, a cut on that product too? Because we're really concerned about light pollution and we'd really like to see what that fixture would look like. And finally, has the design team done any 3D modeling? Everything we're looking at is a 2D modeling. Have they considered a 3D modeling to share with the, with the both Grafton and Shrewsbury? Really be helpful for the residents to see that and if they could do a flyover, something similar. Thank you.
Can we respond to those questions, maybe even the order they were presented?
That seems like appropriate.
Great.
So the stormwater overflow, as detailed in the stormwater report, there are various, when you analyze stormwater, you, you, you analyze flow rates at various design points. So you can check to make sure your peak flow rates and your postconditions don't exceed your pre-development conditions. And is documented in the, in the report and our watershed maps where those all are. So there's various different design points and typically they're either some of the wetland areas or Summit Brook, right? So there's, they're, 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 they vary. We have some isolated wetland areas as well. So essentially the overflow from the basins, if they do overflow, will go to that design point. And that is factored into the, to the design, the calculations. So it's not tied into the municipal stormwater.
We don't, you know, we don't have a municipal stormwater system in, you know, other than, you know, we, we call it, you know, we municipal separate storms who are, but it's, there is, there is some, you know, some drainage, you know, drainage structures, drainage pipes, but it's, it's fairly limited. The, the stormwater discharge that you're talking about, if it does, if, if, that's all treated stormwater?
Yes.
So even if there is an unusually high volume I read, it's, it's still, it's all, it's all treated regardless of where it ends up.
Yeah, and, and the way stormwater works is, you, it's the first, like I said before, the first inch that gets treated, right? It's the first flush, they call it, right? That, that would have the suspended solids or, or anything like that in it. Everything after that, it kind of, anything that would be there gets flushed down in that first, you know, rainfall, right? So anything above a half inch or inch storm is, you would consider that to be clean, essentially already. But the stormwater system, all the basins are designed to handle a hundred year storm event. And then beyond that, there's an overflow spillway that goes to the design points that I described before. There's another question about, are we contemplating a cistern for rainwater reuse? I had just mentioned that we will have a cistern for truck wash. Want to clarify, there, there is no irrigation proposed. All the plantings are native and drought tolerant, so they, they don't need irrigation. So we won't be using, you know, town water for that.
Yeah, you had mentioned that irrigation was only to the extent of what's needed to establish the plantings.
Correct, right.
So temporary at best.
Temporary irrigation for establishment, right? So they don't die off in the first new year and then they establish and they, and then they don't need any irrigation beyond that.
I think Brian had a couple of other questions too.
There was a request for a cut sheet on the wall sconces. If it's not in the package, we'll submit it and make sure that's part of the record.
It's the same fixture, just mounted to the wall. So it's the same LED shielded fixtures. And that's documented in the site plan, in the photometric plans.
And then finally, the, the resident asked about doing 3D modeling or flyover. We haven't done that yet. Some of the reason is, as was indicated by Mr. Perry's presentation, the distance that we're covering under the conditions. So we're not sure that under the circumstances here, it's really a justifiable expense. So if the board feels differently, then we'll try to figure out how to wait to do it.
Okay, Brian, your hand is still up. Do you have another question?
No, that, that's all I had, sorry, I'll put it down. But I, I think it would be very helpful for the residents to look at a 3D modeling on this proposal. Thank you.
And then there's 3D models, there is just a static 3D image. And then there is the, the flyover thing, which is cool, which is cool if you see it, but it's a lot of work to, to build that.
Is that actually helpful in this case? Aren't they?
Yeah.
I, I think the questions are, what am I going to see out of my window?
Yeah.
Or when I'm in my yard and flyovers are not that view.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not at all sure that a flyover would be interesting.
Oh, that's always interesting.
Well, yeah, like I said, it's, it's cool to see, but, you know, in this particular case, at most what might be possibly of value. And even that, I'm not quite sure, was a, just a, a, a single 3D view. And even, even that, off the top of my head, I'm not sure how valuable that would be.
We looked at doing 3D views from the sections that I had shown before.
Yeah.
And we were fairly confident that what they will show are just trees that are there. So I don't know how valuable that would, would be.
Right. In, in, in terms of what people will see from their homes or from the roads. Yeah, I think, I think what you showed us tonight is, is, is a pretty good illustration of, of the idea that from the, from any of the roads or any of the homes, you're not going to see anything. So a 3D view of the building of the site, yeah. Perhaps marginally useful. But for the, for the purpose of what people are going to see from outside the site, I think you've demonstrated pretty well that it's really nothing to be seen from outside. Andrea.
So what kind of, are there chemicals you're going to be using to wash these trucks? What's the?
As, as I indicated, I, I think we should just give you an entire written document as to how the truck washing bay works. And we'll, we'll give you essentially soup to nuts as to how often it happens, the volume of water, the source of the water, the anticipated loss rate, the chemicals used, the recapture, those of re-treatment and everything. And that way you'll have it and we can obviously have follow up questions after you've had a chance to look at.
Yeah, I think at this point, questions about the truck washing.
Sure.
Further questions should be deferred to us receiving that detailed information. Once we review that, then we may have other questions.
Absolutely.
As you hinted.
And then finally, you'll give us a breakdown of the sewage as well?
Sure, we can give you an analysis as to the anticipated water usage. You know, since it's not irrigation, most of it ends up being into the sewer. It's not a high use facility essentially, because there's no production going on essentially. It's, it's mostly.
The domestic water and sewer usage would be predominantly employee activity.
That's right, exactly.
So you don't anticipate a million point two coming to Grafton for sewage, just the Shrewsbury? You mentioned that you're extending the sewage.
That's not this facility. That's for the existing facility, Route 140.
It was brought up in the last project too and it caught my attention.
No, that, that's basically, that's a longstanding project that UPS understands is going to be part of the UPS facilities for the foreseeable future. So that's a commitment they've made, given their long terms through the status they are.
But that's Shrewsbury sewer.
That's right.
This project is connected to Grafton.
Coming to Grafton, that's right.
And I, I know at least residential in Grafton, the sewage costs that Grafton imposes on a property is tied directly to the amount of water they use. And I believe it's the same for business, but I don't remember 100%.
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty normal that what, what comes in and the water pipes goes out in the sewer.
And we've coordinated all that with the sewer and the water departments as well. The usage, we've given them a breakdown of the usage. And we've discussed the connection fees with them already. We can, we can provide that information.
Everything's going to the Grafton for the sewage?
Yes.
So it's not the right time, but as I think of it, who's providing the electricity?
Selco.
Selco.
Shrewsbury's providing. Shrewsbury Electric Light Company.
There's a site, there's a site there.
Redundancy with National Grid.
There's, one of the, one of the sites on, already there, I think has power from both. Because they are lights on 24/7, et cetera, et cetera.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
No.
If not, if there are no further questions at this point, then it's to be continued.
22nd, is that right?
August 12th.
12th.
That's right. Yes, actually, August 12th.
Okay. Great, thank you very much for your time this evening.
I move that we approve the applicant's written request to continue the hearing until August 12th at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Brezner.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katramen.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye, motion carried unanimously. This is continued for everybody who's interested, come back here on the 12th.
Thank you so much.
We'll pick it up from there. And we have not much left on our agenda. We believe we have a bill, a bill or two to be paid.
Yeah, we have some bills, I move that we pay them.
I second it.
We're going to second it, they'll be paying our bills, any discussion. Hearing none, Brezner.
Aye.
Wood.
Aye.
Hassinger.
Aye.
Van Katramen.
Aye.
And Robbins votes aye, motion carried unanimously. We actually have minutes of a previous meeting. Do you want to take a moment to review those from January 24th?
2022. Is that executive session?
It's January 24th, 2022, there, there is minutes from that meeting.
Yes, yes, Natalia worked to prepare those.
And when I looked through those minutes, I only found one nit to pick.
Sure.
And that's in item 4A. It mentions 165 acres, which I believe the site that we're referring to is actually something more like 16.5 acres. So like missing a decimal point.
Okay.
Other than that.
I move we approve the minutes with the edit from Mr. Robbins just mentioned.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Brezner.
Should I approve him? I wasn't there.
It's up to you.
Yes, you can.
Okay, aye. Aye, whatever.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katramen.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye, motion carried unanimously. Anything in, I'm going to skip over staff report for a moment. Although you may, you may have something brief you want to communicate to us, but correspondence. Anybody see anything interesting correspondence?
Only your little housing sites in Grafton, which is interesting, but I think we can, in this time, move that to a different discussion.
Yes, it, it probably does not merit any discussion this evening. And, but anything you want to give us in the way of a staff report?
Just quickly, hazard mitigation committee met, voted on the matrix and we'll send that to the select board for approval. Master Plan Working Group met on Monday, had a really productive discussion about transportation, quality of life and we'll continue that conversation at the next meeting on the 5th as well as, I'm sorry, service, town services. Wayfinding and branding is going through another set of revisions. So then the working group will meet at a date to be determined by the consultant. He's currently working with the feedback that was provided and we'll be presenting that. I plan to put a bug back in ComTrak's ear about our Wi-Fi hotspots project. So this has been, I actually don't think I've discussed this with some of the newer members. So we had in our, one of our planning efforts, there was a recommendation to pursue Wi-Fi hotspots in various parks across town. So we had hired consultants to do an analysis. We have an F man network in town, so fiber network that we can connect to. So the groundwork is laid, we just have to, I just have to bug them again about it. So we did get a grant from the state to carry out that work, which is exciting. So I'll keep working on that. We have a walkthrough for the Highfields project. That's been progressing very rapidly and Graves Engineering has been out there and actively reporting to me. Phase one report of the Fisherville Dam has been completed by the consultant and we're preparing to file a RDA with CONCOM to move on to the next step of getting that design and permitting done. So that grant is moving along really quickly, which is nice. And the open space parcel prioritization plan, the, our GIS consultant implemented the changes that we approved. So if you, if you can, if you remember, there's a score assigned to a parcel based on its, based on a variety of factors that was agreed upon by the committee. And you can float over and see what the score is. I want them to build it a little bit more with some of the details that were approved by the select board and Open Space and Recreation Committee. So also a work in progress, but the foundation is there, which is, is awesome. So, yeah, we're happy with that. And I prepared a CPC draft application for the Robinson properties that were just approved by the select board. And yeah, I'll answer any questions. Sorry, I feel like I'm sort of, get to, get out quickly, but.
Are you coming to CPC meeting this Thursday?
I cannot, I haven't asked me, something else I shouldn't ask. I haven't asked me anything this Thursday with Craig Dauphine and Andy Jefferson of the select board. So I will be at that. So anyone from the public can come and speak to me and Andy and Craig about any questions you may have. So that's, I will not be able to attend now.
So we are evaluating all the open space in town?
We had an open space parcel prioritization plan that was approved, yeah. So we, and it gave a scoring criteria for parcels that we.
Seems like we could do that for traffic studies and traffic lights as well. Like let's review the areas and say, oh yeah, this looks congested. I mean, come on, we can't even do that, like it couldn't take that much.
Probably easier said than done.
I don't know, I drive around this town, I'm like, this is traffic here and here and here.
That's, yeah, unless, you know, any other questions, happy to answer.
I don't imagine any of us want to hang out here too much longer. Just to, just to touch base though, do any planning board representatives and town committees and CMRPC have anything to report?
No meetings.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, we adjourn. Ms. Brezner. Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katramen.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye, we are adjourned, thank you very.